Okay. Good afternoon. I think we'll go ahead and get started, and I think I'll state the obvious again. This is an unprecedented time for our state and our nation. Within the course of one week, we've learned of the first positive cases of COVID-19 in Iowans, identified community spread, implemented mitigation strategies, including school closures, to protect the health and safety of all Iowans. We are monitoring the situation in real time and making evidence-based decisions to mitigate and slow the spread of the virus. Our efforts are focused on preventing a sudden spike in positive cases that could overwhelm our healthcare system and cause other significant impact to the state. Last night, I recommended that Iowa schools close for four weeks. This recommendation is driven by evidence-based guidelines from our federal partners at the CDC, as well as just great coordination with the Iowa Department of Public Health. We know that our children are generally less affected by COVID-19 than others; however, they can carry the virus, spreading it in the community. We also have teachers and staff working in our schools who are older adults, and others, including children, with underlying health conditions that would put them at risk. These variables, along with community spread metrics, were important factors in our decision-making progress process. Other substantial community spread was confirmed. It was time for the next phase of response and mitigation. We know that closing schools has a ripple effect for Iowa families, businesses, and our workforce, and I understand that many families are concerned about how to care for their children and continue to go to work. Childcare plays a key role in supporting Iowa's ability to continue essential functions. My staff is working hand-in-hand with the Department of Education, the Department of Human Services, and the Department of Public Health to put policies in place that ensure continued access to childcare during this time. And this includes financial assistance so that childcare providers who receive childcare assistance are paid on enrollment rather than on attendance, and ways to expedite licensing so that we can quickly ramp up childcare capacity. Many low-income families who rely on meal programs in their schools are worried about how they will feed their children at home. Iowa has already applied for and received a USDA waiver to allow schools to continue serving meals upon closure. Schools will be able to activate their summer meal programs and provide meals in non-group settings such as drive-through pickup or a grab-and-go. The Department of Education is working with school districts now on these details, and schools will provide more information to families soon. The legislature will be considering, and I will sign if passed, legislation to waive the instructional time requirement for any time missed while schools are temporarily closed during the next four weeks until -- well, are temporarily closed until April 12th of 2020. That legislation will also provide me the authority to waive this requirement for a longer period of time if we determine that that becomes necessary. Today, the Department of Public Health has confirmed one additional positive case of COVID-19 in a resident of Dallas County. The number of positive cases of COVID-19 is increasing across the country, and the same will occur here, especially now that we have confirmed substantial community spread. Today, a second shift is being added to the state hygienic lab to expand our testing capabilities. Our daily capacity for running tests will now increase from 54 to 108 tests per day when the situation warrants. We are ready at that point to add a third shift so that we can continue to -- so we can run tests around the clock. National labs have also begun running tests from Iowa, and these labs are required to report all positive test -- test results to the Iowa State Hygienic Lab, and those numbers will be included in our daily updates. However, we will not know the number of Iowa tests pending at the national lab or a number of -- or the number of negative test results. Because the information available to the state hygienic lab and the Department of Public Health is now changing, we will continue to report our positive cases and the county of residents, but we will no longer be able to provide information regarding any known risk factors or contact information related to the positive cases. Today has been another very full day here at the State Emergency Operations Center. This morning, I held a meeting with all state agency directors where I updated -- where I was updated on their mitigation plans to protect the Iowans they serve and their operational plans to ensure business continuity. Later, my team met with Iowa's health systems and other provider organizations to discuss their readiness to serve those who will become ill due to COVID-19. I'm encouraged by the one-team approach they are taking together to ensure Iowans will have the care that they need and deserve when the time calls for it. And we're going to continue to work closely with the team and stand ready to assist them with their needs as we move forward. We're continuing to work with other businesses and industries to discuss how the state can help ensure that Iowa remains open for business. Also today, I joined other governors for a call with President Trump, as well as Vice President Pence, and their team for an update on COVID-19 mitigation efforts at the federal level. The president has met with the grocery industry, and he just assures and assures us that stores will stay open, and he asked that all Americans shop for their weekly needs, allowing stores to keep the items in stock so everyone can purchase essential essentials for their family. We also had a call with our grocery industry on Saturday, I think it was, and they indicated the same thing. You know, we're coordinating efforts there to make sure that we can get the commodities out to the locations so that Iowans will be served. He also shared that more testing capabilities are being rolled out across the country. President encouraged all Americans to, again, practice social distancing to stay ahead of the curve with the virus. And I am also calling upon each and every Iowan to be an active part of our statewide mitigation strategy. You really can make a difference. Now is a critical time when we can mitigate and slow the spread of the virus in our state. But it takes all of us working together and to do the right things to make that happen. So I just urge all of you to follow the CDC guidelines and take preventive measures to protect your health, as well as the health of others. Wash your hands frequently. Cover your coughs. Clean frequently touched surfaces daily. Avoid crowds. Consider staying home as much as possible, especially if you are a vulnerable population with underlying conditions. Avoid all nonessential air travel, and especially cruises. And most importantly, if you are sick, stay home. And call your doctor first before going in for an appointment. They will run you through an assessment and help get you the information that you need. These steps may seem too simple to combat a worldwide pandemic, but they are the most important things that we can do right now to mitigate the virus and to slow its spread in our state. Finally, I know that there is a feeling of uncertainty as the situation continues to unfold, and as I continue to say, we just need to remain calm. We need to stay informed, and please be vigilant about your health and the health of your families, friends, neighbors, and fellow Iowans. And so with that, we will get through this together, and of course, I will continue to keep you updated as we -- as more information comes in. And with that, we'll go ahead and open it for questions. I will say, because a lot of different areas are being impacted, I have several of my directors of the various agencies with me today, and so if there are specific questions, I may ask them to come to the podium and address your question.
Governor, the president was talking about submitting to groups of 10 or fewer. That impacts obviously so many places like restaurants and ultimately daycare all the kind of things. Other governors have already pushed through changes when it comes to restaurants, as far as you haven't gone that far. Is that what's happening?
Well, we're continuing to assess the situation. We're not making that recommendation right now, but I said the same thing with schools. So each day, we sit down and multiple times throughout the day, we continue to assess the information that we're receiving. Again, we can address this, and you can do that without me ordering these businesses to close. If you are sick, you have a fever, a cough, any respiratory illness, stay home. Practice social distancing. Once we apply the basic recommendations that the Department of Public Health and CDC is making, we start to have the impact that we're looking for without implementing some of those additional procedures. So I'm not saying we're not. At this point, we are not, but we're going to continue to assess the situation. Hey, I bet they do takeout, so call and order and pick it up and take it home. So there are other things that we can do to support our business and industry, to help keep them up and running, but most importantly, again, if you're sick, stay home and practice social distancing.
Governor, on that call with the president today, there was reporting that about ventilators, that he was saying he tried getting those additional resources yourself. Where does the state stand on ICU bed ventilators if people are really experiencing, you know, extreme conditions, critical conditions? And, you know, what are your thoughts on that request from the president?
So I talked about the multiple meetings that we're having with our healthcare providers and really talking about delivering the services from a healthcare ecosystem and network, and part of that is conducting with the providers what resources they have, the supplies that they currently have on hand, and what their projected needs are going forward. We already had started this conversation. We need people -- we need to be thinking outside of the box, and so we've already tasked a couple of our agencies to reach out to some of our private sector vendors to see if there is an opportunity for us to put in some orders here at home, as well as what we're doing through the -- what do I call the -- where we're getting the other resources from? Who's going to help me? What's that called? Strategic National?
Strategic National.
Stockpile, yeah. So we also are placing orders there, but we're also being proactive and looking for opportunities where we can maybe do some of that in our state, and all states are doing that. But in addition to that, we're trying to get a good sense, and we're working on it daily, of what we currently have for supplies, what our anticipated need is, and how we can be proactive in making sure that we can meet the needs of Iowans.
....................................
So right now, what we're trying to address is flexibility for districts to not have to meet the instructional time. No, we don't know where the end of this is going to be. With a four-week waiver, that is certainly going to impact needs for graduates and the requirements of the state, so that flexibility allows us to be proactive, consider what future implications might come into play, and let districts figure out what their other plans might be to address those needs.
Might some of these schools have to extend their school years in summer?
Yeah, so the waiver of the instructional time requirement sort of changes what that conversation would look like and gives us a chance to address this as the situation evolves, and maybe that's a question for you to answer.
Yeah, well, it just gives us more flexibility, but that is a concern right now, and, you know, then we have other circumstances that we deal with once we move into summer. But again, this provides some relief through, I think it was April 12th, and then we'll reassess after that. I believe the powers -- they have extended some powers to the governor to address that going forward, and we're going to continue to work with the Department of Education, as well as our superintendents across the district, and continue to assess the situation. But right now, this really gave them, I think, some relief that they were working for -- looking for as they try to plan what their next steps are in educating Iowa students.
I was asking about how many do we actually have in the community that are working in the area? Are we starting to put together plans with doctors making difficult decisions?
They say waving?
Yeah, so the number, the exact number of number of ventilators, we continue to reach out and assess sort of ventilator capabilities, higher level of care capabilities, and as the governor said, having conversations with partners throughout the state to talk about how we would work together. Your question about what we would do if we were challenged with those resources, that's a great question, and it's another example of something that public health and clinical partners have been working on, not just for weeks or months, but for years. We've put together plans about how we handle surge capacity, both at the individual facility level and at the state level, as well as at the national level, how we work together and how we prioritize caring and providing the services that we can for patients. But that's all the more reason why it's so important to stay home when you're sick, to avoid, you know, having to overwhelm the healthcare system.
Do you have a plan?
We do. Do we offer that plan? Yeah, we do have plans. There are some plans through a public health preparedness that are actually considered confidential, and I believe this falls under that.
Governor, can you talk about testing? We're hearing from some Iowans that it's taking quite a while to get their results if they have COVID-19, and that kind of what's the process? How long does it take, that sort of thing? How many tests are out there?
Yeah, I don't know if I can -- I don't know about the number of tests today, so maybe Dr. Padde or Sarah can address that. But within 24 hours, the tests that are going into the state hygienic lab, we're able to provide those results -- well, I should just let you, I don't want to miss -- within 24 hours. And as I said in my remarks, we're adding a second shift so that we can almost double the capacity that we'll have to test, and if the need arises, we'll be able to add even more. So the turnaround time is relatively quickly there. Once we go to some of the national lab availability, that's taking a little bit longer to get the results back, but today on the conference call with the vice president and the president, they did address that, and as we're expanding the number of kits and the capacity to do the testing, they also are reducing the time that it takes to get them back. They mentioned 48 hours. I don't think they're there yet, but that's a goal, and they want it to be reduced to even a quicker turnaround time than that. And so I know that's the goal, and every day, I think they're having their -- the capacity is growing, and we're making great strides from that perspective, too. We know it's really important, because the sooner we can get the results back, then we need to take the precautionary steps. Is there anything that they need to be doing in the interim when we're testing? If you're sick and contested self-isolate and stay home, I mean, I feel like a broken record, but again, I mean, they need to, if you have any of the symptoms, you call the doctor, you go through the assessment. He makes the determination if you should get a test or not, or come in. If you determine it, if it's determined that you do need to test, then you would need to stay home until we find out what the results are, and then they'll start the additional assessments that they do from that. We are, that's a priority of mine. We're working on it. There are 10 states that are doing that right now, so we are hoping that we will be able to stand that up. What I learned on the call today, though, is a lot of the drive-through tests are really focused on public health officials, first responders, EMS, our essential services, that we need to make sure that we have the workforce in order to take care of Iowans, and then Iowans 65 and older. So there are some parameters in the way that they're standing up the drive-through, but I still think this is something I'm hoping that we're able to move on, and it was, I know, a topic of conversation at the healthcare meeting, too. So there, everybody's looking at it, and hopefully, we'll be moving to a couple of those drive-through test opportunities.
The state auditor has already ordered his employees to work from home starting this week by tomorrow. Are you close to doing a statewide policy?
Every one of the agencies have already implemented that. They're way ahead of that. They're already -- Dr. Garcia, would you like to kind of give an update on what you've done? And this is reflective of what we're seeing in some of the other agencies as well.
Certainly. So we thought, being the Health and Human Services Agency, that we should probably set a good example here. We went from being an agency without a telecommuting policy to standing one up. Today, we deployed 500 employees to a work-from-home status focusing on Dallas County and the surrounding Polk Counties' areas, offices, and by the end of the week, we should be up to 2,500 of our employees. Obviously, we do have some individuals who are in direct care roles, who don't have an option to telecommute.
And that, thank you, Dr. Garcia. And that's reflective of what we're seeing across our state agencies. So they've already implemented those practices, and will continue again, like we do throughout the day, continue to reassess how we're delivering services and meeting the expectations of Iowans.
Do your providers have any individual who have confirmed that some of their parents are actually becoming, you know, down to their areas? What people are doing, what sort of providers are doing, and what advice do you have for their parents?
Yeah.
They are trying to find care for their children?
Well, I want to talk again about the collaboration between agencies and why it's so important and why we are kind of co-locating here at the Seahawk so that we can have native conversations in regards to issues just like that. I want to thank the Iowa Department of Public Health, the Department of Education, and the Department of Human Services. I don't care which one of you want to take that. Maybe Kelly, do you want to step up again and then walk through some of the steps that they've already taken in regards to your question?
So we, I think we have two, kind of two categories of children here. Children who are not school age and already in care, where their providers may be making the decision to close. We did send out guidance over the weekend in partnership with the Department of Education around how best to make that decision. And then we have children who are school age but are affected by school closures, and they're before-school and after-care, might have also closed around the school closure as well. And we're working on both issues. So it's important to us, because there are risks and benefits to every decision in this time, but the need for childcare during this time doesn't go away. And so we're working with individual providers, we're working with superintendents, to stand up alternative sites, particularly, as the governor mentioned, for employees of hospitals, first responders, other essential workers during this time who really can't afford to be away from work. And our goal around that is to really ensure that providers are still able to operate safe childcare settings. Sending children to grandma and grandpa is not a good idea at the moment, and so we'd like to really make sure that we continue to lay eyes on children. And really, I mean, again, a broken record, but having parents and providers in childcare settings really hold true to not sending a child if they are ill, and doing scans at the doorway when children are dropped off, really making sure that, of course, handwashing and pristine hygiene at the centers is at the core of their mission. We do that during cold and flu season. We're ramping up our technical assistance on the regulatory side to make sure that childcare providers are staying true to that model. We've also asked the Department of Corrections to help us in our supply of hand sanitizer and cleaning products, and that will be key in this effort.
But if K through 12 kids can't go to school, why should those younger than that, why is it still safe enough to tell me what to do?
So I think there's a question there about health safety, which Dr. Padde and I have been having extensive conversations around. And then there's a broader impact around economic and child welfare issues. So children, again, the need for care does not go away, it just gets pushed to a different place. And I know that we've seen, I myself don't have a Facebook account, but we've seen that some individuals are standing up alternative childcare sites on Facebook. Again, parents still have a need for care, so it would be our preference, strong preference, that in this time, we step in and provide that space, that we social distance as much as possible in those settings, that we provide technical assistance around good hygiene practices, that we hold true to not admitting children who are ill, and we ask parents to keep children home if they have the ability to do that.
Mayor of Miami is testing positive COVID-19, and has shown absolutely no symptoms. We have this question for Dr. Padde. So how are we, if we're looking at symptoms, stay home with symptoms, I mean, how can we say that people are spreading this disease just like he might have been if he wasn't before?
Yeah, again, a great question, and overall, I would say it's an example of a place where we do continue to learn more about this illness. I would also say that it's always really important still to think about the person, about the patient, and their symptoms, and how they feel. You know, tests are great. Sometimes we get false positive tests, sometimes we get false negative tests. It's really important to think about the person. And I can tell you, I was on the phone with CDC as recently as an hour ago, who's reiterated the same thing, that we're going to continue to learn more, we're going to continue to investigate these things, but we really think people are spreading when they're kids. Again, you know, taking those cues of if you don't feel well, and this I know is hard, but if you don't feel well, even with a mild, right? So if it's just a cold, it could make somebody else in one of those more vulnerable populations really, really sick. So even if I don't feel super sick, it's important that I sort of isolate myself and stay away from others and keep an eye on how I'm feeling, regardless of whether it's COVID-19 or flu or anything else.
And I understand, but people who are at home and who are watching TV or reading the news or whatever, they're scared. You know, is it, what do you say to their peers, what example does it?
Yeah, again, I think that's exactly why it's important to remember. There's a couple of really good things you can do, and I know that sounds simple, but if we think about what we know about viruses like this and this virus, it's somebody who's sick for the most part, who's coughing, right, or sneezing, or droppings, or going on to somebody within close contact. And so the more we can do to keep those people away from others and, you know, not allow those opportunities for transmission, the better.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the regular board meeting of the Marshalltown School District. Welcome to all of you who are with us this evening and have socially distanced yourselves. We can only hold about 40 people in here, so we would be below the 50-person threshold.
It's 10 now.
They say 10 now.
Oh, 10. Well, would y'all sit out in the hallway? Okay.
First volunteer, Jim.
And welcome to those who are watching us on DILYed Broadcast. Allow me to introduce the people at the table with me. From the right, we have Karina Hernandez, Bob Antiet, Sean Heitman. From the left, Jan McGinnis, Mike Miller, and Sarah Faltis. At the center table with me, to my right, is Paulette Newbold, the board secretary, and to my left is Dr. Theran Shude, the district superintendent, and I'm Bea Niblock. We do have a pink sheet on the speaker's table for anyone who would like to address the board and is not on the agenda to sign up. You would speak then during public comments, and you would be given five minutes to address the board. According to board policy, we are not allowed to respond to your comments, but we thank you for them. Please read with me the mission statement for the Marshalltown Community School District. We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences. And stand as you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, there is one change. We added a document relative to an adjustment on the 2019-2020 school year calendar based on what we know today relative to the recommended closure.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Heitman Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries 7-0. Moving on to the consent agenda. Looking at the minutes of March 2nd, are there any additions or corrections? Are there any items of note and personnel? Looking at inter-agency agreements and contracts, we have an agreement with the University of Northern Iowa for field experiences. We have a counseling service agreement with Center Associates for the 1920 school year, and an agreement with Two Green for Law and Services. We have one student in general education open enrolled to Mason City. Looking at open enrollments, we have three out for the remainder of this year, and we have 13 out for the 2021 school year. Are there any items of note in bills? Are there any questions from the board on the financial report? May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Heitman Faltis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 7-0. Steve?
Do you want to come up here?
Yes, please, and use one of the microphones.
Thanks. My name's Steve Benzema, 2407 New Salem Road. I was just with the changes going on with the virus threat and kids being extended, being home. I'd reached out to a couple of their teachers to see if it was possible to have their Chromebooks sent home, to be able to go through Elexia, ST Math, things like that. I've got elementary school age and one at Lanahan. So typically, it's only Miller School and High School where the students are able to bring them home, but I figured in this situation, if that was something that you guys could consider as a part of the rest of the pandemic or infectious disease plan or anything else that you guys are doing with that today, if that would be possible. I had reached out to a couple of their teachers to see if it was possible to have their Chromebooks sent home, to be able to go through Lexia, ST Math, things like that. I've got elementary school age and one at Lanahan. So typically, it's only Miller School and High School where the students are able to bring them home. But I figured in this situation, if that was something that you guys could consider as a part of the rest of the pandemic or infectious disease plan or anything else that you guys are doing with that today, if that would be possible.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks.
That's cool.
Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of throw that out as something to be able to kind of help as parents with kids at home, to be able to help keep them going through stuff, to be able to do things like ST Math and Lexia and any other programs that they might have. So I just wanted to give that to you as an offer suggestion, to be able to, as a parent wanting to help with the education of my kids while they're home.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks.
Do you want to give Pat the other microphone?
Absolutely. Here, let's just.
Is the green light on?
Hello? It's not, I think we could share. That's probably not.
Amy's coming.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to discuss the pandemic or infectious disease plan that our district put together to guide us through the situation that we are going through right now. As a school district, we play an important role in protecting the health of our students and staff from contagious diseases. This pandemic or infectious disease plan provides guidance for reducing illness at school on a regular basis, as well as procedures during infectious disease outbreaks and pandemic periods, as we're experiencing right now. This plan has three stages to it. I'm not going to read through it all for you. The first stage being the planning or prevention stage, that basically started before our break. I think each of our respective departments, we saw what was coming around, and we saw that the COVID-19 was definitely in our states at that time. We certainly, the CDC had not, you know, declared it a pandemic yet, but we knew that it was coming our way. So each of the respective departments had already considered their plans, you know, from nutrition department to buildings and grounds and busing, the health offices. And I know the academic areas were looking at it as well. So that is the first plan, the first part of our plan is, you know, the prevention and planning stage. And then the second stage is the mitigation stage, and that's where we're at right now. And in that mitigation stage, that is where Dr. Shutey and the council comes in as far as deciding what we're doing as far as canceling school and moving forward, based on the guidance from the CDC and the Iowa Department of Public Health. And the third stage being the restorative or the recovery stage. And hopefully, that's not a long ways down the line. But as soon as that curve starts to flatten, hopefully, we'll be able to enter that stage and have that, we will have this plan in place and know what to do when we do get our kids back into our schools. We worked, I, we worked through, each of our departments, you know, came up with the plan that they were going to put into this, and everybody worked together very well. As I said, everyone already had this plan in place. This just actually put it on paper. So we have this to guide us now and moving forward in the future if we do have to experience anything like this again. Pat Thompson is referenced a lot in this as our Marshall County Public Health nurse, and she's been here to guide us, and she's been a great resource for me. And when she's really busy, I have called the CDC, or called the Iowa Department of Public Health directly, and they have offered me great guidance as well. And I know Dr. Shutey has done the same. Let's see here, I'm just going to kind of look through here. Each of these phases, again, looking at it, the preventative stage, which started before we even left for break, we were getting hand washing signs up, putting information on our website, putting information on our social media sites, trying to help prepare families, giving them some guidelines as far as, you know, respiratory etiquette, social etiquette, you know, and when to keep your child home from school. And that was hopefully going to prepare us for where we're at right now. We have had, I have had a lot of calls as well, as I met with all the nurses today too, a lot of families, a lot of community members reaching out for guidance, wondering, you know, in this time of uncertainty, what does this mean? We reinforce that we have a plan in place and that our goal is to make sure that our students and our staff are safe and healthy, and we will do everything that we can to do that. And I know that Pat, as the public health nurse, is working very closely with all of our community members and our community, what do you call them? The?
Board of Health.
The Board of Health, to make sure that Marshalltown as a whole stays safe within this. And am I correct in saying at this point still, we have not had any positive cases in Marshall County?
There are no positive cases in Marshall County, or any cases that I know are being tested myself, that's been given that information.
Yes. So moving forward, we hope that we can, I'm not going to say that it's not going to happen here. As we see this community spread, which we know is out there, we're finding that there are many people that are asymptomatic, they have no symptoms, and they, but yet they are positive. And so that's what is of concern, and I know that's what the governor is looking at when she is handing down this guidance for us. And not so much because we're not seeing as our, our school age kids affected, even though we do have some positives not here, but in the state, one so far that I know of. And, but it's taking that, those germs home to our families and our friends, and social distancing is so very important, and that is very hard to do in classrooms. And I know today, many of the schools were talking about it, and I know us at the high school, when we gathered for our meeting on Google Hangout, instead of being together in a group, I know some did it via their, their phones, you know, the, we were all practicing social distancing, but that is very hard to do for students. And we were looking at how classrooms could be set up, and, you know, in some of those small classrooms with 30 kids, how do you get the six feet, which they're recommending? And now, we're not even recommending 30 in a group, right? Is that now done? So as we know, this is a very fluid situation. It's changing, not just daily, almost, you know, looking at things hourly to see how this is all evolving. And what I have, I reassured our staff at the high school today, we will make it through this. This is all uncharted territory for all of us. And I know that having this plan, this is helpful for us now and moving forward. And I think, you know, we have a strong group of staff, administrators, students, community, and together, we're all going to work through this. We're going to practice our social distancing, we're going to wash our hands, we're going to make sure that we stay informed and follow the guidelines that are being handed down to us. And we're going to have people make sure they stay home when they're sick. And we will make it through. We're going to try to stay calm and be there for each other. And I know that I already have had staff and families reaching out that are very anxious during this time. So I think we have to be very cognizant of that as well as, as we walk through this, that this isn't just going to be a physical thing, this is going to also affect, you know, the psyche of so many of us as, just because of the unknown. So.
And I want to thank Stacy for her extraordinary time and efforts and responsiveness, especially during the course of spring break, as things were kind of changing by the days and then hours within the days in order for us to be able to formalize our plan. I'd also like to present, based on what we know today, which includes the governor's recommendation of a closing schools for four weeks. Prior to that announcement, of course, we made the announcement that we were going to extend what had been our spring break another week through this week for our students. And a lot of that had to do with not knowing what we didn't know related to where people had been traveling and to know how informed, despite, you know, the national press, despite the messaging that we were pushing out, there were still concerns about people knowing how to respond to situations relative to where they had been and what they had been exposed to and that sort of thing. So in light of the governor's recommendation, I am recommending to the board that beyond this extended spring break, that we extend the closure of school for students and staff another three weeks. As I said in my message to our students and parents and staff, the extension of the spring break will not result in students having to make up those five days that were extended in addition to the one snow day that we had. But our teaching staff is contracted on days and not hours. We had the latitude within the hour framework for students to be able to flex that. And so what we're recommending is that our teachers who are in, working diligently today with the administration, continue to do that through Wednesday for the primary purpose of putting information together, and they can be shared with parents in terms of how they can best work with their children at home to sustain the learning that they've received thus far this year, and to put them in a position of readiness when we're ready to come back to school. Those three days, of course, will be three worked contract days. And then what we're proposing is for school, for students and staff to resume on Monday, April 13th, assuming that the governor's recommendation stays the course of a four-week closure. And once we do return, we're recommending that the teacher work day be extended by a half hour a day from Monday, April 13th to Monday, June 15th, in order to make up the three other contract days that were lost as a result of this break, assuming that the state, whether it be the governor or the legislature, does not grant a waiver. And, and we don't know whether that will happen or not, whether there'll be a reduction in the minimum instructional hours that students need to have. That could happen, and if that does happen, then we'll take a look at trying to figure out what we can do differently from this plan. But just basing on past experience in this district, whether it was extensive weather-related closures that we've had, or whether it was during the H1N1, when Marsh Town was, I think, either the only or one of the few districts that had to close down for a period of time, typically, those days have to be made up. So under the assumption that those days are needed to be made up, an extension of what we had regularly scheduled, which was a June 4th ending date for students and a June 5th ending date for staff, would be adjusted to a Thursday, June 25th ending date for students and a Friday, June 26th ending date for staff with this particular plan that we're asking the board to approve tonight. Again, we don't know what we don't know in terms of what might happen differently. These are extremely unusual circumstances, uncharted territory to a certain extent for not only Marsh Town, but our state and country. And so it would not surprise me if some unusual adjustments are made or flexibility is given. And in the event that that does take place for students and for our employees, we'll work with our, continue to work with the union and do what we need to do to make the appropriate adjustments. I anticipate over the course of these four weeks, every day, having briefings from at least the Iowa Department of Education and their new director, Dr. Ann Lebo, and I'm sure there will be others, whether it come from the Iowa Department of Public Health or the CDC or what have as well. So I would request the board approve this tentative calendar adjustment for the remainder of this school year, based on what we know today. Questions for Stacy, Pat, or Dr. Shutey?
As far as graduation, has there any thought of that as far as a date?
There is, we have not discussed in that kind of detail yet.
And do we have a plan for how we're going to get the message out to parents?
As soon as the board approves this, there'll be a press release that goes out this evening.
Erin, I think this is probably not your direct problem, but certainly a community problem. How do we handle childcare issues that parents are going to have for the next month? And, you know, they've got to work, they've got to make money, they don't have any place for their kids to go. Have we given any thought to any of that? That's going to be like an economic hardship on lots of people that is maybe unbearable for some.
Right. At 3:30 today, prior to the governor's press conference, there was actually a Zoom meeting with all the state superintendents. And part of that meeting was with the director of the Department of Human Services, talking about how we could work together to at least provide DHS-approved daycare for those within the community that we critically have to accommodate, such as first responders and food service people. And there was a list of people that would, hospital employees and that sort of thing. And so I actually have to complete a survey for them by midnight tonight to share with them the best of what I know as it relates to our community. And I think from there, they're going to try to figure out across the state what they can do at least to take care of what they deem to be the, the top tier or first priority of the, of the daycare. Obviously, it is of grave concern, as, as we've seen, many of the daycare providers have closed along with the schools, which makes it a more complicated thing. We're going to try to do our best to work and figure out how we can provide some level of childcare for sure for the youngest of children through probably the preschool age for sure.
The other financial hardship I think you place by doing this is on employers in the area now are going to have a much higher degree of absenteeism because people have to stay home to take care of kids. And so then employers have to decide, okay, regardless if they have sick or vacation time, is that going to be paid time off or unpaid time off? And so you, by making a four-week decision today, that is a unintended cost that the school district is placing upon the business community as well as the citizens. And so are we sure that announcing a four-week hiatus is the right thing to do today as opposed to something less and then maybe another one if the situation in the world is, warrants it?
I believe, based on the information that we've seen, that we'll be fortunate if this closure is only four weeks. Most recently, I've seen where they believe that it will reach its peak potentially in six weeks, the virus. So I think taking the most prudent proactive actions hopefully will help Marshall Town mitigate what otherwise could occur. In terms of that, hopefully, we'll be an anomaly, you know, in comparison to what's happening in a lot of other places. But I think we'll be very fortunate if we're able to maintain a four-week closure, quite honestly. I do think that it's going to take a community effort, including our employers, to effort, including our employers, to try to figure out how to best accommodate our employees with this childcare issue. Obviously, we as a school district and with school facilities and some capacity to be able to accommodate, I think, some of that need. It makes a lot of sense, which is why DHS spoke with us today about trying to gather what information they could to find out what we might be able to do. But I don't think we in and of ourselves are going to be able to manage all of the needs that you're speaking to.
As far as staff, like Paris, uncertified staff, will they get paid throughout these four weeks? Or is this a non-pay leave for them?
Currently, it would be an unpaid leave like a snow day would be. But I know that there are things that are happening at the state level and there's information that hopefully we'll be able to help relay very soon that can provide any of our hourly employees that are not working, who otherwise would work with some financial reprieve or some options that they can exercise, whether it be in terms of temporary unemployment and that sort of thing.
Is the intention to continue food service through this extra three weeks?
Yeah, our intention would be to continue food service. We are hopeful that maybe as early as tomorrow or certainly by Wednesday, when our teaching staff finish, we'll be providing publicly information, helpful information in terms of what our students can be working on. The district has, district curriculum professional development, people have been working on that even prior to the teachers beginning to work on it today. We do plan to provide opportunity for parents to check out Chromebooks for their children who are below the age of already having one issued to them. So all of our seventh through 12th graders have a personal device issued to them that they're able to take home. Our kindergarten and through sixth grade students will have the opportunity of their parents coming in. And we'll be pushing out information on that soon to check out a personal device as well.
Other questions? May I have a motion to approve the pandemic and infectious disease plan and temporary calendar for the district as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Heitman, Faltis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
You wish you were there?
Oh, it's extending the screen. That's why, yeah. Here, just drag that.
happening at Lenahan. We're taking this opportunity for our showcase event to show off a new piece of, a new resource that we're using for curriculum in the...
Just thanks.
Yeah. Oh, I dragged the wrong one.
I need like three.
Okay, sorry. So we're going to show a little bit more in-depth detail on a program that we're using in our sixth grade literacy courses this year. And we have some people that are driving the ship on that with us today to talk in more detail on what that looks like. For those of you that are unfamiliar with the program, it's called Amplify, and it's something that all of our sixth grade students are using this year. It's from the same company that has developed our, we're using for five, K5 literacy as well. But this one is unique in that it is primarily, it was all online. And so all of it is digital. But one thing that I think we're going to try to highlight tonight is the fact that while it's all digital, it's not all sit and get. It is not a, here it is right in front of you. It is very collaborative in nature. One of the things that's really positive is the fact that it has very prescribed routines that are, that are consistent daily. Even if the activities change daily, the routines are very similar. And so we want to highlight what it looks like from both a teacher's perspective and a student's perspective and give you a little taste of what our sixth graders are doing right now. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to the, to the experts on this. And I don't, and Sammy's name wasn't on the board documents earlier. Sammy Stewart is one of our sixth grade teachers and she's, she's filling in today. She thought we was going to be teaching dance, but no dance. They're keeping their distance, no dance tonight. So she's here with us.
So every lesson starts out with a vocabulary app and students answer questions at their own pace. And it's grade level vocabulary. So it's just on a time. And it's not... So they read through and answer the questions for about five minutes every day.
Or technical struggles here. Are we working? Yeah. I don't hear, is it working now?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. And it gives them immediate feedback for their answers. So that's great. They get to understand the vocabulary words they're answering. And it's just a great start to class, vocabulary practice. Anything else you would add? Okay. Oh, thank you. That was, that was my question. So as Sammy said, students come in every day. They do the vocab app to get started. That's one of the routines Kyle mentioned that is a great way to start class. They know right what to do when they come in and sit down.
Throughout the lessons, the students engage in grade-level rigorous text.
Yeah.
In all of the lessons. For example, this is a, an excerpt from chapter eight of The Adventures of Sherlock Holmes. So this is just one example of the type of texts our students are reading on a daily basis. They read short excerpts of texts throughout the course of a unit to make up a larger text. And then by the, so by the end of the unit, they've read a larger text. By the end of this unit, I think they read three chapters of Sherlock Holmes. As they read, the blue words have a synonym or a definition so they can get a clue as to what the words mean. The students can also listen to the text. So oftentimes, they'll listen to the text in class. And then later, when they're doing their solo assignments or their writing prompts, which relate directly to the text, they can listen to it again to help them answer their questions.
Yeah. All right. So one of the really cool things...
Microphone.
Oh, sorry.
This one's wireless.
All right. So one of the cool things that Amplify does is they have a lot of interactive activities. So this particular one was called the Sherlock App. So what they needed to do was place the furniture in the appropriate place. But in order to do this, they needed to dive, dig a little deeper into the text and look for the clues or the evidence to help them place the furniture. It also, if you click on the excerpts, it kind of gave you different excerpts. So they could drop and drag that to say, hey, this is why I believe this is where it should go. It was really cool because the students would do this individually. Once they had completed it, then we got into partners. And then they had to prove whether theirs was right or not. And listening to the discussion was really awesome because you would hear them say, I think that's wrong. You need to go back and you need to look at this paragraph, you know? So it was really nice and very interactive watching them engage. And they had a lot of fun working within this particular app. All right. I know, click a little bit. Another thing that Amplify does in pretty much every lesson, they have a poll. So the kiddos get to read the question and then they get to, you know, answer how they believe. Once everyone has submitted their, their answer, then I would click on poll results and then it would pop up. Oh, yeah, we're not in class. Yeah. But anyway, then, I mean, their names, their names don't pop up or anything. It just shows how everybody, you know, individually answered. But this also drums up a lot of great discussion on why they chose the particular answer that they did. It also brings them back to using that text evidence and supporting their answer.
All right. Then to show their overall understanding, they have a lot of writing assignments. At first, they really struggled to get their ideas out, but we've been very impressed how much they've improved with this writing routine. There's usually a warm-up where students get their ideas generated and we kind of overview what we've talked about during the lesson. And then students write for 10 minutes straight, quiet work time, and the text is right there for them to refer to. Like this example, they had to pick a detail and describe how it turns out to be a useful clue and pick another detail. And they always have to explain their thinking. So it's just another example, using the text, explaining their thinking. And the goal is to write 100 words or more. And they're very competitive about it, too. And they're so proud. I wrote 150 words today. So it's been a great routine for them every day.
Let's keep in, keep in mind that at the beginning of the year, it was like 40 words. They're getting way better.
All right. So...
Sorry.
One thing that I, that I really like about this program, especially in terms of writing, is the fact that it, there is that daily writing component. And I'm really hopeful, and with not only this daily writing component in our thrice yearly, you know, writing assessment that we're taking, that the newly added writing component in the ISAS, we'll see a lot of, a lot more confidence coming into that assessment now with our students because they're used to generating ideas and writing on a daily basis. And I think that they'll see, they'll have a lot more confidence. And I think we'll see longer writing samples from our students now that they've had a lot of practice with that. So that's Amplify on a daily basis. Any questions for, for this team on this program? They're doing great.
We've been really impressed.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, so the kids keep coming here. Yeah, all this stuff.
Technology guy?
Yeah. And I'm going to ask, I think it's Matt and Casey, is that right? All right, come on up guys. And then Sue as well.
Did you get it all?
No, I haven't gotten, pass it down, wipe it down.
Where are you sitting at?
I'm sitting right here. Okay. So tonight, we also have the opportunity to talk to some big elements that we want to highlight in our district. And we are fortunate to have had a, oops, oh, I lost my mouse up there. Sorry. We're fortunate to have had an intermural, after-school intermural program at Lenahan for, I think we calculated the past two and a half, this is our second full year, but we started in the winter of 2018. And so I have with me today Matt Butler and Casey Moberly, who are co-directors for this program. And I'm going to give them a little chance to, to talk just a little bit, and then we're going to keep things moving quickly, about the program and what has been successful and what we're, what we're excited for in the future. I've given you some notes, too, that we've talked about. So don't worry.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Nobody wants to hear me talk about it.
Some of the activities that we have offered is golf, tennis, basketball. We did outdoor soccer and indoor soccer, different years, and a fitness club. And Mr. Butler is going to do a wiffle ball, kickball session for the last quarter this year. We kind of cap it at 120 students and we see them three nights. So they come Tuesday night, Wednesday night, or Thursday night until 4:30. We offer busing on Tuesdays and Thursdays, which has increased our numbers immensely. And a lot of the kids that couldn't have done this program prior now have the opportunity and the chance to do it and are super excited about it. So I think that was a great addition for our program and this program. So...
Just, and to speak a little bit, I'm going to jump in. I'm sorry, I said I wouldn't. To speak a little bit about the number we have there, the 120 students, that equates to teams of about 10 to one. So we're able to give, for every 10 students, we have, we have an adult with them that's, that's coaching them and supporting them through these activities. We felt early on that if we didn't have, you know, a low student-to-an-adult ratio, that we weren't going to be able to offer a lot of, a lot of instruction and support. Because for a lot of kids coming in for basketball, this is their first time playing basketball. This is, this is, for a lot of kids, especially playing golf this year, this was some of their first time picking up a golf club. And so we wanted to intentionally keep that low. Now, if we get to where our demand, you know, necessitates that we expand that past 120, we will just continue to add more staff to that. But right now, as it lays out on each day, we haven't hit our peak on all those entirely. We've maxed it out, but we haven't had the need to go like, all right, we gotta, we gotta add another person yet. But some of our activities are obviously extremely popular right now. So Matt, anything you wanted to add down there?
Just want to add that golf was new this year. And it was the first time that we had a lot of kids go out and golf. And we were very fortunate to have help from the Iowa PGA Association and our local PGA pros. And we actually took the kids to the American Legion Golf Course. And so that was a very fun activity for them. And a lot of them was the very first time they'd actually been onto a golf course. And so it was really fun to see.
New, sorry. I, I, so I added a picture of them playing. And we actually, we had a power outage a couple of weeks ago after, right at the end of the school day. And the games kept going. So we wanted to make sure that we were showing you how diligent we were even, even under adverse conditions. And actually, I think all of the kids... Actually, I think all of the kids absolutely loved the fact that they were playing soccer with the mood lighting on. Also want to highlight that we've, we've added a coding and makerspace group now to one of our intramural activities. We're really excited about that. I'm sure Sue would have probably rather have talked about that as I looked down.
That's all right. I'll go ahead and talk about it if you'll let me.
Oh, sure.
We did this year, just, we had a grant from the Iowa STEM Council that provided makerspace materials that included at Lenahan. So we did do a makerspace and coding after-school activity. The students were, again, two instructors worked with a group, and they did have 20 students for the first time. They just, they did it once a week. I think they were on Tuesdays and used the busing. We piggybacked off of the busing of the athletic after-school activities. We also have planned for the fourth quarter, we'll see what happens, but we had heard that we wanted to be able to expand it to other areas as well. And two of the music teachers were, are planning on doing a world drumming unit for the fourth quarter, as well as a teacher, and I think Andrew Potter was going to volunteer, and Bill Roberts were going to do an improv club after-school as well. So we were trying to hit the arts as well as, and the STEM activities as well as the athletic activities, knowing that many students don't get those opportunities and they can use that after-school activity. Can I keep going about elementary?
Oh, sure.
Okay. And based on the success that they had at Lenahan and seeing the need that they had in the response from students, we were able to use some Title IV money this year and we started doing after-school intramurals at all six elementaries. We got started about the time the 21st Century Grant started in October. We met once a week and the first activity was ultimate throwing. The PE teachers in five of the buildings and then another teacher in the building were the instructors for the first session. And they based it a lot on the skills the students were learning in their PE units during the year, the, the skills they'd been teaching them on the crossover and, and which hand you throw with. And so they taught them, because PE at elementary is often skill-based, they really worked with them on getting games going to where they're playing frisbee, or it wasn't frisbee, they were with small balls, but balls, ultimate throwing down the court. And that was very successful. We continued with the second session being a coding and makerspace and our teacher librarians in five of the buildings. And I got to teach a group with them as well at Anton. And it was, again, we had groups of kids doing the coding in the makerspace. And our plan for the spring was to do, or is to do foote-sall, which is an indoor soccer with a smaller ball to try and introduce, like we have the courts on 13th Street, to introduce that skill to students. In all, we had an average of each of the first two sessions, we had over 100 students averaging. And that's about 30% of our fourth graders. So we were really proud to be able to offer this and see that students were taking advantage of it. Because, again, it's a barrier that not all kids go to play Little League or to play at the Little League or to play on a traveling soccer club or those higher levels. So it was a great way for kids to get to play, extend their physical activity, and be a part of a team. We really stressed that, that this was cooperative activities, how do you work as part of a team, and as well as getting the skills. So we've been really pleased with it at this point and, again, hope to continue it in the future.
So I want to thank Casey and Matt. I don't know if it was three years ago or so when I just kind of dropped in and said I'd like to meet with you a little bit about this idea of intramurals. And you guys have really taken the ball and really figured out how to identify activities that our kids at the fifth and sixth grade level want to do and get staff to get behind it in terms of providing the, the support. And as Sue alluded to, because of the success in a short period of time of providing kids with these engaging activities, whether they be athletic or academic in nature, now it's springboarded into our upper elementaries, anyway. And keeping that in mind and remembering the phrase, I forgot the phrase. But anyway, I had invited Carrie Barr and Terry Gray to come, which they could join you, Sue, briefly to talk about the Marshawn Town Youth Foundation and how they help support these youth, our youth participating in these activities outside of the schools. Well, I also want to say that Sue and I have recently had conversations with John Turpkosh out of Kansas City from the United States Tennis Association. And it looks like we're going to be in a position to apply for a district-wide grant to help provide $1,000 worth of tennis equipment for each building in the district that could be used within physical education as well as intramurals as well. So in conjunction with our hopes to move forward on our tennis court project in Marshawn High School, that'll be another opportunity that kids can be exposed to a sport that maybe otherwise they wouldn't to ladder in life. So thank you very much. And Carrie and Terry, if you want to join Sue, who's also a member of the Marshawn Youth Committee?
Thank you. I am Terry Gray, and I feel like I'm back in my old Park and Rec role, talking about intramurals and John Turpkosh, who I worked with many, many, many years. So anyway, this kind of fits that role and it fits great into Lenahan, too, especially because of the band program we have. But the Marshawn Youth Foundation started many years ago in 1996. We went through a strategic planning program about six years ago. And since then, this program has really been strengthened. We began meeting monthly. We have a board of 12 members now, which Sue Cahill is one, and that's how Dr. Schutte knows us. And we're on more stable financial footing now to be able to help students participate in activities. So you're talking about the activities at the school and we're talking more about the activities outside of the school day. We know it's important that kids have connections and are involved in things. They're more successful when, when they are. So we can talk about sports and the value of sports. You know, there's teamwork, there's responsibility, there's all kinds of things that play into that. Glad to see there's some transportation for the intramurals. That's one thing that the Youth Foundation has never been able to overcome. What the Youth Foundation does is try to help some of the financial barriers that families have when it comes to participating in activities in the community. It started many years ago, basically thinking about the Little Leagues, the girls softball, soccer, those kinds of things. We want to get kids active at the grassroots level. We don't help students pay for elite traveling teams or anything like that. It's signing up for the general recreation programs that are available to kids. On the brochure, it lists some of the agencies we work with. We have funded kids going also to art camp or theater camps as well. We're always open to people that see a need as far as their agency being involved. The other big thing that happened is we are now part of United Way. As of two years ago, we became a United Way agency. So that's also helped in stabilizing our funding a little bit. We feel really good about being able to meet most of the needs that we're given now. There was a day where we would not be able to help all the kids that needed help. Our goal, our mission is to help the families and not really do it for them. Our ideal goal is to really have one-third, one-third, one-third. If we could pay a third of the registration cost and the family could pay a third of the registration cost, and maybe the organization itself has some funding where they can help pay. But once we've given the family a voucher for the cap amount that we're willing to invest in that student, in that part, in that program, then it's up to the organization, Little League or softball or whatever it may be. It's up to them and the family to determine how the rest of that fee is paid. So though, that's what we try to do, is help financially families participate in the programs that are already available in the community. We have a board of 12 members. I think we have strong members now and meeting monthly has helped a lot. So this, this participation in these sports or other activities are part of our program. But I would say one of the biggest parts of our program is our band program. And instrumental in that, ha-ha-ha, is Carrie Barr. I'll have Carrie talk about the band program.
Thank you, Terry. Everybody here knows the benefits of music to kids, and so I don't need to tell you that. It's academic, obviously, but it's also social. Not everyone thinks of that. It's a good community spread because they together learn so many great, great things that they carry on throughout their life. One thing that happens, and it's a result of our great band staff, is that there's another caring adult in the life of the kids. Marshall Town Youth Foundation was started based on research done showing that the number one predictor of success after high school is participation in activities. And so we're thrilled with the intramurals and I, and you already know that, that's why you're doing intramurals. So we applaud that and we partner alongside you in that. And the part of it that I work with a lot is the, is instruments. We've been told by our workforce partners that the music helps kids develop the things that they look for in hiring people. For instance, excellence, obviously, depending on each others or knowing that others are depending on you, to do your part, practice, plan ahead, lay the groundwork, to think and adjust on the fly when something maybe doesn't go right. You go with what you, what you can do. And that, that's the end of my presentation, except I just wanted to say, if you have any instruments you're not using, give me a call. We'll put it in the hands of some kids.
Well, I think Carrie didn't tell how hard she has worked to accumulate instruments that are really the property of the Marshawn Youth Foundation, but they're housed and tagged and loaned to students at Lenahan. How many instruments do we have out?
I think we have 162 instruments. And I did not get, I didn't figure out if any of them went to Florida this year. But I know some of the students who went to Florida learned on instruments that we gave them. So it's, it's just a wonderful success story and there are so many people who love giving instruments and they're, and the kids, of course, love getting them, so, yeah. And we couldn't do it without the staff. Mr. Sybil has kind of taken it as his baby because fifth graders, where he teaches, are the beginning. And so we, we hand out as many as we can to fifth graders. His goal was, because there is something like 80% free and reduced lunch, or what used to be free and reduced lunch, he thought 80% of the band should be using our instruments. So we have a ways to go before we hit that goal. But it's great to have teachers thinking along those lines and trying to promote it. And our, our band instructors do just a fabulous job. If you ever want to feel good, go over and watch Mr. Sybil teach 160 kids at one time and they all listen to him. He is wonderful.
Thank you.
We thank you for your efforts on behalf of our students.
Thank you. Bee, I remember, John Steinbeck, "The best lead plans of mice and men often go astray." That's what I was thinking when I saw Carrie and Terry show up, who I had invited but had forgotten to put on the agenda. Thank you.
Yeah, there are red Marshawn Youth Foundation tags all over our building and it's exciting to see that so many kids are getting that opportunity because of that organization. Can't speak highly enough for those guys. We have a couple more things on the Lenahan train here to speak of. I think we got everything on our intramurals. I'm in a little haze here because when Dr. Schutte mentioned John Turpkosh, John Turpkosh was my high school social studies teacher and I hadn't thought that name for a long time. I knew that he was in the USTA, but I did not make that connection. So I'll be excited to connect with him soon on that. That'll be great. Okay, so we're going to talk computer sciences elementary. This was a grant that Lenahan was awarded last spring for the amount of $50,000 in an effort to implement computer science instruction at the fifth and sixth grade level. Previous or prior to this grant, the instruction had been, really pre-K4, and then 712, there had been computer science opportunities and not really any formalized opportunities for computer science learning at the fifth and sixth, sixth grade level. So we're excited to share that in, I don't know, six months of implementation, we are, we're the leaders, man. We are, we are, we have it going on right now. We are, we are excited about what's happening in our building in relation to that. So our plan was to have all kids engage in computer science learning on a six-day rotation like our, our specials, whether, like art, music, you know, PE's twice in that cycle, but then our guidance media. So we have a computer science special that all kids engage in. So all 800 and however many are getting regular computer science instruction from Amanda Miller here. She's doing a great job. She's going to talk about what the details of that course are. The other part of our plan with this grant, and it's a two-year grant, was to get our teachers on board with the importance of the ad instruction and how that, how implementation of computer science at our level will lead to future success for our students. And so we used funds from this grant to bring in support from a local seed repertory firm, Nuboko, to teach our stu, our staff on the importance of computer science. That was at the beginning of the year. We've also had some professional development related to a program called Brainpuff, which our math and science teachers this year are utilizing to take that learning that they're getting in Amanda's class and applying it into content-related opportunities. So they're taking, they're going from learning how to program to programming or creating a program to show their understanding of other content, whether it be fractions or different countries. They're using their understanding of computer coding to show off their learning now, which I think has been fantastic. So I'm going to turn it over to Amanda for a little bit to show, or to talk about what her class is like.
For the last couple of months, we, for the beginning of the school year, we started out with the Code.org curriculum. Our plans are to use that for both fifth and sixth grade for the entirety of this year. I also have put in there education through the program called Scratch. We've been working on projects for that and that's really helpful because that's, Brainpuff Creative Coding is also using the Scratch engine to be able to code their programs. And so on one side, I have social studies teachers who are giving projects about different countries. And on my end, I'm teaching them about how to code the different things, the nuances of that. And then also before the Christmas break and into January and February, we have been, I let students have the freedom to sort of make their own projects, something that was important to them or felt good to them, something that was uniquely, something they liked. And I wanted to convey to them that there was, you know, it's not just about making programs for your class. You can make programs for you. You can make programs for your friends. You can make programs. And one of the great things is that the Scratch website is actually a big community of people who share the programs that they've made on there. And so one of the things I think is really cool is And so, one of the things I think is really cool is, one of the students that I have for his project, he created a game, and I sort of, as I was going through the projects for my class, I came across this, and I didn't realize that he was, he had worked outside of class on it, and he worked really hard. And I found it, and I was like, wow, this is really good. And I came in the next day, and I announced, oh, you should, did you guys see this kid's program? And he wasn't there. And so, but, his friend was there, and he was like, yeah, I helped him make that. And so, it swept the school, the fifth grade. Kids have all played this kid's game, and he actually went from six levels that he made to 20. And it's almost like he's a little celebrity just for putting that work and effort into this coding project, and that's something that he can be proud of. And then, he told me, I've made 20 levels. I think I'm ready to move on to something else. I was like, good, don't pigeonhole yourself. Don't, don't get yourself stuck into that one thing. So, he's switching projects and adds something new. I've also been having, I also have a computer science enrichment during our Bobcat time. A lot like art and PE have enrichment classes to go a little bit further with their learning. And this is also the time where they have the orchestra and instruments, music classes. And I take students, we, it's, it's hard to say what we do in there because I have students working on tech-based coding in games. I have students who are working on their own projects or helping other students work on their own projects. Students bring in books from the library and, about coding and programming, and I give them guidance on where to go with that. I had a student come in with a coding book for JavaScript, and we haven't actually, I haven't formally given anybody in my classrooms a place to use JavaScript. But because of my enrichment classes, I learned about an online JavaScript compiler that students can use, and I guided her to that. It's easy to use, and she can sign up with her email and save her progress and build her own webpage. And so, that's pretty cool. I think that students are getting really excited about it. I think that a lot of students are seeing something that they didn't know that they liked, and suddenly, it's something that's accessible to them, and something that they can be creative or be, make projects for their classes. Also, make projects for themselves, make things that they like, share with their friends the things that they've made. And that's one of the reasons that I'm really excited about the showcase that we have coming up for that. I told students when we were doing projects, I really want you to make a lot of different projects, because I really want you to show your family, your friends, the one that you're really proud of. So, I want you to have lots of projects to do. Once we get back, we're going to continue on with the code.org curriculum. We've also been looking at some other foias into tech-based coding as well. There's some free things out there that we've been looking at. I think that's it.
So, no, there's, 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 there's a lot of information there, and I think it's, you know, it's one of those things where I'll be, you know, I made it a little bit of an executive decision. We had, we had a little video that I wanted to show you of, of some projects, and then I, then I took an audible, and I'm going to say, I'd love for you to come see it, but I want the students to be there to show you. And so, I'm inviting you all to our showcase event, tentatively scheduled for May 20th. That may change. It probably will change. But we'll, we'll be working with our, with our community partners at MechDyne to ensure that there's a date that works for them, because they're working alongside us on this grant as well. The other thing that's neat about this grant is the fact that we have an opportunity to work alongside the dozen or so other schools that were awarded this grant, both through virtual meetings and onsite learning opportunities. So, our staff is getting a lot of opportunities to learn from one another. I will say that we're further along than most of those schools as far as implementation. Some of them are still in the planning stages of what they're going to be doing, but, you know, our plan was to do this whether we got the grant or not. And so, I think this is the right, we knew it was the right work, and so, we were going to do it anyway. So, I think that was great. Wanted to show a couple pictures off. We had some of our kiddos were invited to go show off at the Governor's STEM Day at the Capitol recently. They were so proud of the work that they're doing. They thought they were huge celebrities, and they were for the day. They, you know, had kids who were like, this is the greatest thing I've ever done, and so, to hear that from them, it was, it was awesome to have people that were interested in their projects and to see them. They were, they were very, very proud of the work that they did and excited to keep continuing giving kids that opportunity to showcase what they're doing.
One of them got commissioned to-
Oh, yes.
-make a project for, for agriculture.
Yes, they, they're on the spot there. They're like, hey, we need a game that can show, teach kids, you know, what you need to have in order to grow a plant. We need sunlight, moisture, good soil, and if you don't have all those things, the plant's going to die. So, we have, you know, lots of kids, you know, kids now that are like, I, I gotta make that and show that off, so.
Leah there in the middle.
She's gone, yeah.
Very small one. She's, she's already like, I'm gonna, I gotta do some research on this. Where can I find information? I was like, wow.
Yeah, they're all about it.
Beautiful website.
So, questions on our, on our grant? Like I said, it's a two-year grant, so we're reaching the halfway point. Going to maybe run into some interesting things on how to expend all those monies with a slowdown right now, but we'll, we'll overcome.
I just want to point out that out of those six kids, only two of them had ever really gotten into coding, like, really programmed their own thing. Those four who hadn't, they've come really far, and that's because they really enjoyed it, and they wanted to find more, to see more, to figure out how to do more things. And so, I, I'm just really proud of them.
Well, kudos on your implementation. You know, we spent a lot of time at the board table talking about providing greater access to technology for kids. The board has approved significant expenditures to really put Marshalltown in position of being one of the state leaders in terms of having access, meaning devices per student being one-to-one now, K-12. But as I've said for a long time, it's one thing to have the devices, it's another to use it in a meaningful way. And I know Erica Fenders is back there, and her, and Pam Brewer-Michael, and others have worked with the teachers and the administrators to really create a vision for how we can do that. And, you know, whether the legislature now that they're on a four-week closure gets around to actually approving the governor's future-ready recommendations, but it was very enlightening for me to read through those and to see that we're already there. What she's recommending happen across the state at the elementary, intermediate, and middle, and high school levels, we're already there. And so, now, it's more about building greater capacity so that hopefully our kids are knowledgeable and interested in wanting to do more at the high school level as a result of what you guys are doing at the earlier grades. So, thank you.
There will be more kids.
I know. Yeah, I believe that. I'd also like to commend Erica Fenders, Pam Brewer-Michaels, and also our, our, I don't know. They've been really helpful in letting, giving access to that content to the classroom teachers in a way that I couldn't do it on my own. They, those PD days, we spent quite a few of them making sure that those teachers felt comfortable accessing the programs that they needed to help the students through these coding projects that they would do for the content area. And so, I think that that has been really beneficial for us to be able to put that into the teacher's hands and them want to use it and be ready to use it, so.
Thank you very much.
All right. One more.
Mouse.
All right. We're definitely, these, the regular slides are on. All right. One more. Yeah. One. Okay, how about that? You'll, you'll, yeah. You better be. All right. Yeah. Do you want to, I think we want to- Start with this. It's your call. Want to, I, I can't control it. Yeah.
Actually, Amy's driving.
Sorry. Yeah, no, no, go back, go back. Go to the start. Yeah. Scroll up there. There we are. Thank you. Yep, go for it.
Hi, my name's Tim Hungerford, and I'm Marshall County Deputy Sheriff, and I'm our regular guest at Lenahan. So, I was asked to come with their spotlight tonight, and wasn't really sure what direction that request was from, but just to give you guys a general information on what DARE is and what I do at Lenahan, because I am there regularly. Spend 10 lessons with each classroom and reach every fifth grade student each year. DARE is a police officer that comes in in uniform and teaches kind of some counseling lessons to students. It's taught in every state in the United States, 52 other countries, and reaches a million and a half students annually throughout our country. It started originally in Los Angeles, California, in 1983, and the police department came in, and they decided they need to help kids, and to realize those kids need to know that the police were there to help them and that they should set goals for their future. So, the police chief there created this program. In Iowa, the DARE Association is one of the leaders in the state, in the country. The DARE workbooks, the blue books that I gave you, for example, are all provided free of cost, and every student who graduates from DARE receives a DARE T-shirt free of cost. So, it doesn't cost a lot for us to produce this. The Mid-Iowa Drug Task Force sponsors my DARE program, and they give me $1,000 to $1,500 a year to spend on little handout things, like pencils and things like that. So, it's pretty low cost if you have the officer to do it. The Keepin' It Real curriculum was developed by Michael Hecht at Penn State University. DARE originally started with that Los Angeles program and gained a lot of momentum and spread, and then it gained a lot of critics and said, how do you know this works, or does this work, or it doesn't work? So, DARE is constantly evaluating itself and changing and expanding. And they took Mr. Hecht's program that he had already made for prevention, and they bought it, and they brought Michael Hecht in, and they terrified it. They made it the DARE lessons that we have. DARE's been in Marshalltown for 21, going on 22 years since 1998. We've partnered with the sheriff's office, and the police department did it at that time, too. They ran into some budget problems, and they cut the program. So, it used to be in the middle school of Miller as well as the fifth grade elementary schools at that time. DARE isn't about me, but this is me. I've been a DARE, a Devon Sheriff, started in '94, and then I worked for Ms. Niblock as a fifth grade teacher for two and a half, or three and a half years at Anson Elementary, and I switched back to the sheriff's office, and I knew at that time I was going to get to do this program. So, for me, this is a combination of both jobs, the things that I love to do. And I took over from Deputy Steve Saunders in 2005 as the full-time DARE officer at Marshall County. This little video is just a kind of a background promo video from DARE America.
In 1983, there was a widespread concern about the spread of drug use among kids.
Chief Gates, at the time, in Los Angeles Unified School District, realized we need to do something about this problem that the city was facing.
So, here, I'm in the Midwest, and I'm learning about this drug prevention program that was-
Maybe not.
Maybe not. Yeah.
That's all right, we can skip through. It's on the DARE America website, if you want to see that with some other-
And Tim, it's on our, it's on our board min-
Yeah.
It's, we have it on our computer, because I watched it at home.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll go to the, we'll go to the next slide.
So, DARE is a proven effective drug prevention curriculum. It is social, emotional, learning theory. And doing this little presentation's kind of been a reevaluation of myself and going back through that. It's been a while since I've had that training, but it's like, yeah, I do that. You kind of get it. I'll ask you the question I first ask kids when I go in in uniform is, what do you think DARE is going to be about? What's the first thing you'd say?
Don't do drugs.
Don't do drugs. It's going to be about drugs. It's a lot more than drugs. Drugs is a small part of this program now, where it used to be throughout the program from the original, but it's about thinking and making good choices, a social, emotional learning theory. So, we want, SEL is about controlling their impulses and thinking about the consequences and the risks that they take before they make those choices. So, with DARE, every lesson that I have, we stress that be safe and responsible is the outcome that you want from any decision you make, and to be healthy. So, it's not just about drugs. It can be about bowling, or just dealing with your friends, or what you're doing after school. And we really try to make it that simple. It's about making good choices, every lesson we talk about, so the kids can grow up to be good, responsible citizens, and if they do that, they're going to be drug-free. They're going to stay away from those things. So, the basic skills in SEL, the self-awareness and management, responsible decision-making, understanding other people, and the relationship and communication skills, and handling those challenges, that's all the DARE lessons. Everything about SEL is what DARE is about, is what it's created from. So, DARE evaluates, it's more likely that youth is not going to use drugs and to give into the pressure of using drugs. They develop increased confidence. That's a lesson we have on confidence and communication, how to speak to somebody, and increase their knowledge and their skills in decision-making, communication, and relationships. And DARE does that. It creates positive relationships with police. So, this is one big one that, I go in there in uniform, and the kids are very different. They'll let down their guard, sometimes too much, but they'll treat me just like a teacher, and they'll see that I'm just a person, that I've got a family, I've got kids. My wife teaches at Franklin. I share all that stuff with them, and they share their lives with me. So, they get a friend, a positive attitude towards law enforcement, and hopefully greater respect for the laws. And we have 10 lessons, so we're at Lenahan, and this picture, one of the things we do is a DARE poster contest, and this is Emily Hie, who was in fifth grade last year. And I take a few of the best ones I get all year from all the schools I go to and take it to the state contest, and Emily was the Iowa DARE poster winner overall. So, she wants money and another medal and another T-shirt, and so, it's a cool thing for her to experience. Her DARE poster was a game board, and she incorporated all those lessons into that one poster. It has the standards for the national core, reading, writing, speaking, listening, and specifically, science. That's where we do it at Lenahan, is in the science- We have ten lessons, so we're at Lenahan. And this picture, one of the things we do is a DARE poster contest. And this is Emily Hie, who was in fifth grade last year. And I take a few of the best ones I get all year from all the schools I go to and take it to the state contest. And Emily was the Iowa DARE poster winner overall. So she wants money and another medal and another T-shirt. And so it's a cool thing for her to experience. Her DARE poster was a game board and she incorporated all those lessons into that one poster. It has the standards for the national core, reading, writing, speaking, listening, and specifically science. That's where we do it at Lenahan, is in the science program. And it touches all eight standards in the science curriculum at Marshall. So it kind of checks a lot of boxes for the district. Just some examples of going through the ten lessons. The first lesson is an introduction to me and what DARE is and the decision-making model. And we use this throughout the program. It's four simple steps, define, assess, respond, and evaluate, just to think things through and make good choices. And for them to understand, they have to do it, it's not just a magic lesson that happens once you're through DARE. It's about making those good choices. The two substances, main substances we talk about are alcohol and tobacco. There's a supplemental lesson on vaping and I like to put it right in behind these because vaping is a big one for kids and I think it's the first one that comes before these two things. It'll lead to those things and other horse drugs. We do have a marijuana supplemental lesson also and kids are usually interested and have knowledge of that. It's in our community and it's in our schools. I think it's probably been in Lenahan, Miller, and high school for sure and probably some of the elementaries at times. So it's something they need to be aware of and have knowledge to make those good choices. And as it becomes legalized in other states, and soon it will be in Iowa also, that doesn't make it right and doesn't make it safe and you still have to make those good choices.
What is that, DDMM, what is that?
That's just an abbreviation for DARE decision-making model. So we use those steps, there'll be little scenarios that the kids have to think things through. And when they assess, I make them come up with three different possible choices that they could use, good or bad. And then they respond, they make the best possible choice. Lesson three is on risks and consequences, so to think about what good and bad things could happen before they make the choice to help them work through to make that positive, responsible choice. And I always tell them responsible is my favorite DARE word, to be responsible, to do what's right, what's expected of them, to be a good kid. And to make those choices, just like mom and dad are right there with you even though they're not, what would they want you to do? Peer pressure is a lesson, a big one, so they all experience that, figuring out what it is. We have five different resistance strategies in that book to avoid it, stay away from it, or to get yourself out of that situation when it comes to it. Lesson five is dealing with stress, so how it affects your body, how you feel different emotions, and how it affects your decision-making and the actions that you take and how to deal with those things. So you make a positive, good choice. This is an example of, there's videos that we'll use to introduce a lesson, to build on it, and then to have the kids break it down and think about what's going on in that video. So if you click in the bottom left corner of that, of that box, it should play. Maybe?
Or not.
In the black of the bottom left, it's not there. But they're, they're cartooning and they're real kids. This one, Sophia, she, to fit in with another group of friends, they pressured her to steal sunglasses and then they could hang, she could hang out with them. So we look at the consequence, they got caught and the store clerk's calling her mom. So we talk about what that consequence is and what other consequences do they think are gonna happen? Because probably mom isn't gonna be the first call for the store clerk and they know that and it's gonna be the police officer and they're the ones who contact the parent. Six and seven are on communication. We talk about what it is, how to do it, to not be unsure, you're gonna get more pressure, to not be demanding, to be bossy and rude because your friends aren't gonna wanna be around you and listen to you, and to be confident, to stand up for yourself, to do what's right, and to still respect that other person and to listen to them and learn from them. And it goes right into nonverbal communication and the kids like that lesson because they get them up and it's kind of like charades where they get to show different feelings that they're communicating and to pick up on those things. And I tell them how I do that in my job a lot, that somebody might be saying something, but I see something different from them and it's important for my safety to pick up on those things. So they can use that with their teachers, when their teachers are teaching a lesson and their facial expressions or body language and gestures can communicate if they're getting it or not. And just a little subtle thing like that can make that teacher go over it again. And we use decision-making model with that, too. Eight's on bullying and they've, know bullying, they have it every year since elementary. So we talk about how to identify it, what they have to do to be a good citizen with bullying, and that's to report it. They don't have to jump in, they don't have to be Superman, but they have to tell an adult. And we talk about reporting, five W's, to provide that information so that adult can understand what they're seeing and help that person in need. And we talk about it being anonymous and how a teacher's not gonna tell anybody else that they did that. But they can leave a note, they can email, they can call, that there's many different ways to do that because we want the kid to be safe from anybody else who's gonna listen to that or that bullied themselves. Nine and ten are being a good citizen and their health network, so about how to be a good citizen, what they need to do at school, how they need to learn, what they need to do in their community, and that it's life and life that can be hard. And decisions can be hard. And lesson ten's on a health network, to think about all the different people in their life that they can go to for help. It's a good thing to establish those relationships. And these are just our, vaping is one of the new supplemental lessons and that's designed from fifth grade up. And the next one is depression and suicide, and that's more middle school and high school. Not one of us knew this last year, things that we can offer. So future for DARE, that fifth grade program, there's a K-three lessons, which I've done those for four years since I've been doing DARE and they're my favorite with the little kids. And they're just short, twenty-minute lessons, and I believe there are ten of them. So you can do them at kindergarten, first grade, and then there are second and third grades, a four set of lessons that are a little more advanced that lead into the fifth grade. There's a middle school program that's currently being reevaluated and redone. I've taught that at West Marshall Schools. And then there's the new high school curriculum, they're kind of tripping their feet a little bit with that one. That when they introduced it, it was just two lessons, you met with the kids twice and the kids did stuff online a couple times. So they're developing more face-to-face stuff and that's what the DARE officers wanted, they want that time in the classroom with the kids. So future, if you are a supporter of DARE, hopefully you are, you've had kids that have gone through it. I can retire next year, so as of now, that means DARE is going away. The sheriff has no plans to send anybody else to do this job. So I encourage you to reach out to him if you want to keep having a police officer in your schools to do this, to Chief Tupper. I know kind of, there's a movement to get more police officers in schools and there's a Senate file right now for schools to be able to raise tax money that doesn't count in your budget to get more police officers in schools. And if you can do that, you can have your DARE, all those guys be DARE officers and to teach this throughout your school. So those kids have contact from kindergarten all the way through high school and a positive contact with a police officer. So to me, it's, it's a job that I love. I think it's very important and I think it's something that should continue.
David, anything to share on that?
Yeah, I, I'm David Bowles, I teach fifth grade at Lenahan. And I've been around the DARE program for about twenty years, seventeen of them, sixteen of them with, with Tim Hungerford. But I can say with great confidence that Tim has made an impact on the decision-making of thousands of our fifth graders. Has it stopped the kids, you know, from doing alcohol or drugs, obviously not. But the message that Officer Hungerford teaches them is way more than that. Like Tim was talking about the DARE decision model, it's, it teaches these kids a lot more than just drugs. It promotes a healthy lifestyle, making mature choices in life. The DARE decision model is something I reteach my kids throughout the year. Like Tim said, there are ten lessons. The vaping lesson, I think, is the one that, that grabbed the kids' interest the most. They had a lot of stories to share and a lot of information that they wanted to know more about. Officer Hungerford has always kept up to date on the DARE changes and he always takes time to listen to the students. He makes himself available at any time in class or outside of class. The lessons that Tim teaches do coincide with what we are trying to teach the kids, these expectations. So, you know, I can, I can tell in Tim's passion, he, I don't think he wants to retire, but I think he's ready. But I, I do hope the, the program does continue. Thank you.
And in that statement that it doesn't change every kid, what we talked about with every kid, that you make your own decisions and ultimately it's your decision and you get the consequences with it. And I've had kids tell me in high school that they remember those DARE things and kids that make the good choices and how hard it was for them to do that and they fell back on what we talked about in the fifth grade. So when a senior in high school tells you that, it's pretty impactful to me.
I did have one other thing I wanted to share with us, so we had another teacher that was going to be with us this evening. Chris Allman, who's also a fifth grade teacher, who's, who's been with the DARE program for many years, wanted to share that DARE is a very important program to our students at Lenahan, has a decision-making model, as we've referenced, that is kid-friendly and helps them look at all their options and make safe and healthy choices. It is a cross between a health class, counseling, and a little tough love. We are so fortunate to have Deputy Hunger, Tim Hungerford in this role, he's a teacher and a great role model for the kids. Many thanks to Tim for putting his heart and soul into this important work. That's from Chris.
She always wants DARE at the beginning of the year because she uses it throughout.
Absolutely, and I think lots of people would love that, love that, too.
Questions for the gentleman?
Is there a way for us to be able, I mean, district to be able to sustain this program without the partnership of the sheriff or does it have to be through a sheriff?
Well, it's typically taught by law enforcement, so I'd say you have to have some immediate connection there that somebody's been certified in DARE or somebody who will go get it that has that law enforcement. But the police department's done. I don't know if there's other ways you can get it, but somebody who's been in law enforcement.
Okay.
Chief Tupper has recently applied for a COPS grant for the purpose of getting another SRO officer off the ground to serve both Lenahan and Miller, so the timing may be perfect in conjunction with, you know, if we have a successful grant application, plus, as you've indicated, the legislature's been looking at and I've been really strongly encouraging our local legislators to support the idea of us having the extra capacity to facilitate up to one SRO additional. So thank you so much for your service to our kids and our staff, our community with this program, it's amazing.
Thank you, everybody. And here they come. That's a little hand sanitizer, so you...
They probably just saw me. Just looked. All right, let's do this.
Are you hoping to hide behind there?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay. Moving on to how not to be a terrible school board member. Habit number nineteen, Sean.
I had habit number nineteen, confide in a reporter. So our school board member gets a call at work from a reporter who wants to ask some questions. It's not a very good time, he can't really remember very much about the meeting. He's in a crowded cafeteria, so he can't necessarily hear the questions all that well. But he goes ahead and tries to answer the questions anyway. And he, she's asking about the cost projections for some big project and, and his answer is that the projections might be a little screwy, but he's sure they'll work out the numbers at the next meeting and he suggests that she contact the superintendent to get the latest cost projections. So he figures that was kind of a waste of a phone call until he sees the headline in the next day's paper that says Superintendent's Plan Called Screw-y. And at that point, he realizes that maybe he's made a mistake. And I think kind of the gist of this one, to me, is in the, the lessons learned, stay on point. When it says, "When you talk to a reporter or agree to an interview, you are not getting into a casual conversation with a buddy. Talking with a reporter or interviewer creates a special kind of conversation with its own set of rules. Reporters are not your friends, they are doing their job and you have to do yours. And so if you're going to talk to reporters, you need to understand that they have an agenda and that you should have one as well. You need to make sure that you know what you're going to be talking about and have, you know, the talking points that you want to get across prepared." That's it.
Would you concur, Mr. Wants-a-Reporter?
Yes, and I ask anybody in the district who gets a request for any kind of interview to please contact me immediately before saying anything.
We can send them to someone screwy, is that the...
I, I've been described that way, sure.
Don't quote me on that for crying out loud.
Other comments, questions?
We'll take plenty of comments.
It's probably boys, yeah, yeah. Habit number twenty.
All right.
Nora.
Yes, garner public support is number twenty. All right, it's really important to you to keep the public informed as a board member. And so you maintain a Facebook page about your school district and within one of your posts, you link to your blog. And on your blog, you provide a summary of a previous board meeting and, you know, you summarize the key agenda items and talk about what's coming up for next week. And in your most recent post, you talk about, it's, you know, it's too bad that two of your fellow board members aren't on board with this plan and, you know, feel free to email them. And here are some key talking points for you as you engage in a conversation with them. And, you know, you're just, you feel like it, you know, your blog really represents your commitment to communication and so, you know, you are pretty proud of that. But there are some problems here, it seems, you know, your goal is really self-serving. And the question is, you know, are you using your web presence to help inform the public or are you really just trying to garner, garner support for your position? You know, we've talked about several times throughout this book, how it's not about you, you know, it's about the whole board and about the district and what's best for our kids and our staff. And so you're kind of engaging in like a lobbying campaign. And then also, it's important to understand or to remember that some people may misinterpret your web presence as like something sanctioned actually by the district. And that would be a misrepresentation because this is something, you know, you did personally. And so, oh, and then also you could really frustrate your fellow board members because they would see it as going behind their backs. And I think, you know, people would be a little upset if you were, especially if you were, you know, telling, you know, speaking poorly about your, your colleagues and then giving your constituents, you know, talking points and encouraging them to reach out in that way. So in some, some things that you could do better, you should really clarify that your website is your own opinions and provided by you, not sanctioned by the district. Be a little bit less heavy-handed in your blog and then always invite comments, they said. And the last thing is really, you know, the lesson learned is avoid one-sided communication. Your job is really about two-way communication with the public. One-sided is actually considered unethical in this way. So being mindful of those things would make you less of a terrible... So, being mindful of those things would make you less of a terrible board member. Maybe you still are for other reasons, but not for rule number 20. You got that one down.
Okey-dokey, Sarah.
All right. I have terrible habit number 21, sign a petition. So, this board member has long felt, prior to being on the board, that one school in the district had a substandard library building compared to the other buildings in the district, which had excellent library buildings. After becoming a member of the board, this board member was longing for the chance to see it on the agenda to have some discussion about it. It showed up on their agenda today and the board member was super excited. A few weeks prior, the board member had ran into a neighbor at a local supermarket and was asked to sign a petition for the school board to demand a new library building for the school. This board member signed the petition and was very excited that this is long overdue and thought this was a great thing. So, at the board meeting that night, when the neighbor presented the petition to the board, she asked that everyone who signed the petition that was in the room, stand up. So, the board member stood up and was kind of surprised that they didn't have a great reaction from their fellow board members. Then it came time for the board to have a discussion on this and quickly, the board member realized that they did not have the entire picture of what was going on and the why behind what would happen if they did build this building. Some people could potentially lose their jobs, if it was the best use of the money, et cetera. There were a lot of angles to a seemingly simple issue. The board member realized it's one thing for a group to bring a seemingly reasonable demand to the board, but it's another to pledge support for it before you understand all the ramifications. So, reasonable options would have been to not sign the petition and explain to your neighbor that you've always been concerned about the library and you're working hard on the board to solve the problem. You could have told your neighbor that you were looking forward to hearing from a inner group at the board meeting and you would listen carefully. You could have refrained from signing the petition and remained seated when the petition supporters stood up. All of those would have been better options. What it looks like to your fellow board members is that you decide first and ask questions later. And a lesson learned, before you make a decision on an issue, consider all the information. And it's not recommended procedure to strut into a board meeting with a list of demands for the board on which you serve.
Well, would it be okay if you didn't strut?
I don't know. Strut is the key word there.
I think the list of demands is the bigger issue. Strutting's probably okay.
Strutting, strut without a list of demands.
Other comments? Okey-dokey, Karina.
I have terrible habit 22, ignore minor conflicts of interest. Keep in mind, it's at 8:05 PM, item 5G. And I realized that after I read it, I'm like, huh, okay. So, this board member has a close family friend, it's a small community, and the family friend is actually also a real estate developer and he comes in to the board meeting with his attorney and provides the board with a plan to purchase a vacant lot that the district owns and plans not to utilize as it is not something that they will be using for a building. It's unsuitable for another building, so it could be a potential buy. He comes in with an offer that is not so great, but it's better than nothing as the board member, as terrible board member thinks. And they are very nice people. So, you move forward, you're prepared to vote yes and move on. After the presentation is done, you thank the presenters and offer your vote for approval, calling them Mr. President. So, making that gesture as a personalized board, as a board member that you know this person and are good friends with them. Being a bad board member at the time, you are, the person's not being, I guess, not given it, it seems like he's being more favorable because they are friends, so a treatment that we as board members should not act on, especially during a board meeting. So, your lack of concern for conflict of interest puts both you and the district in jeopardy for public criticism. In short, you act like a terrible board member because you're not being appropriate with the presenters. Also, the fact that he lives in a small community and people know him and know that they are family friends, also doesn't give a good integrity or doesn't give it that gray area in between. So, it just, it makes it seem like it's a personal relationship and you're making it favorable because they're your friends. So, one of the appropriate actions could have been, go ahead and make your motion. You know there is no conflict of interest and accept the offer as it is the best interest of the district. Or you can recuse yourself from the discussion and vote. Or you can simply state at the meeting that the person or the family friend, but that has nothing to do with your decision and then go ahead and make your motion. Or you can call the superintendent, ask some advice from the district's legal counsel and then move on from there. So, that would be probably your best option, which is option four, is more appropriate and it shows sensitivity to the issue of the conflict of interest and it might even, you know, publicly state that the district attorney saw no conflict in the issue. So, the lesson learned is when you forget to consider whether others might perceive your actions as conflict of interest, you are thinking like a terrible school board I tend to get conflict of interest a lot. That was my last one too.
Any other comments? Keeping in mind that your most important asset is your integrity. Everybody around the table. Bob.
Hi.
Your turn.
Terrible habit number 23 is taking political stands. The scenario that is presented is that a politician from a neighboring state was caught on tape making a disgusting racist comment. A mythical board member begins part of a meeting by saying, "I'm sure you've all seen the news about the disgusting racist statement made by this congressman and I would like to offer a motion stating that the school board strongly condemns the congressman's comments and calls on him to step down from public office." Colleagues appear to be unmoved, so the person continues, "Our district has strong policies against discrimination and I know we all support the district's no tolerance approach to hate speech. So, it's important that we take a stand against the congressman's hateful speech as an example for the students in our schools. We should reaffirm to students, parents, and employees of our district that this kind of behavior will not be tolerated." The person, the article then goes on to ask rhetorically, "What can possibly be wrong with your stance?" And essentially suggests that the board member should not ask the board to take political stands on issues that are unrelated to your school district. It continues by asking, "Is it ever appropriate for a local school board to take a stand on a local, state, national, or international issue?" And answers, "On rare occasion, if it bears directly on your district such as a proposed state law concerning bargaining rights for school employees, federal requirements for achievement testing, or the like." But the essence of this is, the problem is not that taking a stand is inappropriate, the problem is that the issue is inappropriate. As a board member, your area of concern is bounded by what is relevant for running the district. And that's the essence of this chapter.
Being such a political person that I am, I find that enlightening. And I get the next political one in the next round too. But Paulette has one before.
I have terrible habit number 24, in the situation... terrible habit number 24, use the district's credit card. The situation is that a couple of board members from neighboring districts get together for lunch at a upscale restaurant and they talk a lot about school board issues and such. And when the waiter brings the check, you quickly, one school board member says, "I've got this" and plunks down the school district's credit card. You know, it states that's, there's a common perception that that's what would be done in the business world and running a school district is really a lot like running a business. I would challenge that statement.
Isn't it interesting that that was your...
It's not really like running a business, but anyway. So, you know, his rationale, the school board member's rationale was that having a lunch at the school district's expense, you know, is a small thing for them to be able to get. Your use of district funds for an unauthorized lunch could easily look like an abuse of your position, a form of petty corruption. In the middle of that page, they finally get to the point where, because they only offer one best option, that being buy your own lunch, they say you should not even possess a district credit card. And I know that the author is not from Iowa because they also reference their, your modest board member stipend.
Put a big smiley face on that.
Yes, yeah. And there are no board member stipends for board members in Iowa, nor are board members' issued credit cards in Iowa, so.
But you do get a pass to activities.
Activities for life, yes. Yeah.
It goes back to the integrity issue.
Yeah.
Right. Even the appearance of impropriety can damage somebody's integrity, so. Lessons learned, accounting safeguards are really important and don't give your school board members a chance to do the wrong thing either, which we don't.
Well, we have four more. And I don't know how we drew the short straws, but remember your political party is mine. What a hoot. And we have Theron and Sean and who else?
Lisa.
Lisa.
Lisa. So, we're down to the last four, folks. For how many times is this view mine? Now, for those of you who haven't had enough to boggle your mind tonight.
Amy, if you want to just open up the presentation, I'm gonna focus on that. I did provide the really tiny print for you and so you can refer to those when, it's really hard to see it on the, on the screen. So, since we have a couple of new board members that probably aren't as familiar with this certified budget process, I'm gonna go over just some high-level things and please feel free to jump in and ask questions at any time as you have them. So, the purpose of the certified budget process is twofold. There's two things that we need to do, you as a board need to do. We need to establish and certify a property tax rate for the school district for the 2020, 2021 school year, next school year, which we refer to as fiscal '21. The other thing is to publish our estimated consolidated expenditures for most of our funds. You know, the general fund is only one component in there, so it's important to remember when you're looking at these numbers that we are talking about all funds, not just the operating fund. Almost all funds. This is also a different process than the line item budget process. In the fall, we will actually create a line item budget that fits within this budgetary framework or skeleton, if you will, that we're creating right now. It used to be a lot of school districts had a process of just budgeting, that they were going to spend everything that they could. But districts have, in the last several years, have kind of moved away from that process and we want our certified budget to more closely mirror our actual line item budget that will get developed in the fall. State aid. Thank you. So, these, just a couple of reminders, certified enrollment, primary driver of the amount of funding that we receive. If you recall, we talked about certified enrollment at the December board meeting, one of the December board meetings. We covered that and then the legislature has also signed, or the governor has signed, the legislature approved the 2.3% increase in SSA for next school year, so we're really excited that that got signed before everything went haywire. And what they, the 2.3% increase is $158 per student. So, for our district for next year, the regular program district cost per pupil will be $7,069. So, one of the primary things that we're doing here is establishing a tax rate and a couple of important things to remember is that tax rates are a function of a district's taxable valuation. And districts with lower valuation per pupil will have higher tax rates than other districts with more property value. The aid and levy, this process that we're going through right now is actually like 400 lines of formula, but due to the operation of the foundation formula, a majority of the district's tax rate is not subject to local discretion. This formula helps determine how much of our funding will come from property taxes, how much will come from state aid. Our budget, our goal is to build a budget, have budget projections that maintain a consistent overall tax rate from year to year unless economic circumstances, of course, dictate otherwise. But what we want to do is have that rate be stable and not going up and down all the This is a chart that shows the taxable valuation for the Marshalltown Community School District and you can see since about fiscal '15, it has been steadily increasing each year. The January 1, 2019 valuations, which are what we are basing our budget on for next year, were up 4.31% and that was the first valuation that we had post tornado. So, it was good to see that that continued to go up. This slide here shows how our district is student-rich and property-poor. We talked about taxable valuation per student and there are 327 school districts in the state this year and... state this year, and we are the ninth lowest in the state as far as taxable valuation backing each of our students. You can see by the chart, there's one district in the state that has one, almost $1.4 million of taxable valuation backing each student. Our district this year is at about $204,000, or about 55% of the state average. So, again, what this means. What this means is that our tax rates for some of our funds are going to be a lot higher because we have less valuation supporting, supporting those, that funding. Does anybody have any questions on the taxable valuation?
Wait, can you go back to that general fund taxable valuation and TIF?
Yes.
And?
That one.
That is correct. On the side, it says millions, right?
Yeah, 19 million, but the, the blue part is actually going to be billion. Yeah.
Oh, that's the value of property overall.
Yes. So, for fiscal '21, it's just over 1, 1.1 billion.
That is?
And then the 19 million is the TIF. I should change that.
The TIF?
TIF, Tax Increment Financing. You may have heard that term.
I know that, I know that.
Okay.
What I can't remember is how that relates to us, though. How, what?
Well, anything that is in a TIF district, those incremental revenues do not come to the district.
So, that 19 million is exempt from, we can't touch that?
We cannot touch that, correct.
So, out of 1.14, oh, is the total taxable valuation then 1.145 plus?
Plus the 19, yes.
We, we can only have some revenue from the 1.145?
Correct.
Thank you very kindly.
Yes. Okay, so this slide here, again, our, our school aid formula for the state of Iowa is a very complicated formula that's over 400 lines long, and the Board of Education has discretion over basically four areas of that when it comes to tax rates. The first area there is the SBRC Modified Supplemental Amount for Dropout Prevention. If you recall back in December, you approved our request for modified supplemental amount for next year's dropout prevention program, so that number is plugged in there from that approval in December. The Instructional Support Program, the second section there, Marshalltown Community School District does not currently fund our instructional support program with any income surtax, so that really doesn't apply to us at this time. The Management Fund, this is a use-restricted fund. We have only four or five uses that we can use for that, so that management fund is a levy to fund our property casualty liability insurance coverage, any unemployment insurance claims that we pay, and our early retirement incentive that we offer. Also, any judgments against the district would be paid out of there if, if we had those. So, what we try to, what we levy for in that fund is only what we anticipate we need to pay for the upcoming year. The last section is the Cash Reserve Levy, and we're going to talk a little bit more in-depth about that in a couple of slides here. So, the property tax rate that we are recommending for next year is the same as it is, about the same as it is this year. We're recommending to keep that, keep that stable. We have five funds that receive property tax revenues, and our Pearl Fund, our Pebble Fund, our Management Fund, those are all use-limited, and the general fund is the biggest piece of that right there, and the general fund is our, our basic operating fund. So, this year, we were at a total rate of 1,834, and next year, we are proposing a same rate of 1,834. But you can see, you know, over time, it has, has tended to go up and down. The next slide is just, I think it's important to remember that we are only one of the taxing authorities within the city of Marshalltown, so we, we have six or seven other taxing authorities that come together and they create the consolidated tax rate. So, while we are one piece of a tax rate for a taxpayer, we aren't the only piece. There are other taxing authorities that also can go up and down to change that rate. The city and the school and the college numbers that I have plugged in there are numbers that have actually been proposed. The other ones that are bold there, I have not seen those published notices yet. Also wanted to just make you aware that there are several property tax relief provisions in the school foundation formula that help our district, because we do have such low valuation backing each pupil. Three, the three big ones, property tax equity and relief, property tax replacement, and a property tax adjustment aid. You can see the details there, but if you go to the next slide, the estimated value of these property tax relief provisions for our district for next year is about $2.34. So, that's pretty significant. We want, we do not want those property tax relief provisions to, to go away. This slide, since the general fund is the biggest piece of that tax rate, just shows a little bit for the breakdown of the makeup for the dollars and the rate for our general fund. Our budgets, dropout prevention budget, we're going to be at about $1.37, which was that eight, eight cent increase that we were estimating. Our cash reserve will be up a little bit. Our instructional support levy, this is something that we've talked about in the past. Currently, we fund our instructional support levy with 100% property tax, so that is contributing to the property tax rate at $1.83 per thousand. The cash reserve levy is an important piece of this puzzle. One of the challenges that we've talked about in our district is our solvency ratio, and our board policy target is 8 to 10%. At the end of fiscal '19, we ended the year at a 4.6% solvency ratio, so we need to work incrementally to increase that over time. There's only two ways to increase your solvency ratio. One is to cut expenditures, the other is to increase your cash reserve levy. So, what we have talked about in our five-year budget projections modeling is increasing that solvency ratio incrementally over time using a cash reserve levy. And what we want to do is make sure that we annually get, have a cash reserve levy that will support the expenditures that we have already spent, and we have asked the School Budget Review Committee for additional authority for. So, if you look at the top part there, the fiscal '21 budget, there are things that, that the board has approved, that we ask for additional authority from the School Budget Review Committee. Those things totaled about $3.4 million, and so those, when we ask for authority from the SBRC, those don't come with the cash. This is how we get the cash to support those programs. And so, what we want to make sure that we're doing is, is annually levying that cash to support those programs. You can see, like, back in fiscal '19, we did not levy enough cash to cover those expenses, so we have some catch-up to do to get our solvency ratio and our spending authority brought back together and running parallel at the rate that we want it to be. So, this piece of paper that you all have in front of you, this is what we are required to publish, and set a public hearing to be on April 6th, so the public has an opportunity to weigh in on our budget, our proposed budget, but there's basically five sections here that, that you are approving. The bottom cell, that's green, that $18.33, so this is our recommended tax rate that we would be publishing, and then we publish our expenditures in four different functional areas, which are highlighted in yellow. So, we have total support services, instruction, they don't have the right ones highlighted there, instruction, line 24 should be one of them, total support services, non-instructional programs, and total other expenditures. As you can see, remember that these are all funds, this isn't just our general fund. These are all funds rolled together, and what we do is we look at what our actual numbers were for August, for 2019, fiscal '19. We reestimate what our expenditures are going to be for this year, and then we estimate what expenditures will be for next year.
The, I only want 10 words or less. What, what's the reduction in debt service from '20 to '21? It's about 7 million, so, but why is that?
Yeah, so there are some things on here that you're going to look at, and you're going to say, "That doesn't look like it makes sense," and that's, that's a great question, that's one of them. In 2000, or in this current fiscal year, we actually refinanced some debt, so we didn't issue additional debt, but we refinanced some debt. At the time we did that, did the budget last year, we didn't know we were going to do that. And so, the next item on the agenda is a budget amendment. We're going to have to amend our budget because we refinanced that debt and didn't have that in the original budget. It increased our expenditures because we paid off the old debt. So, yes.
We, so, it's reestimated in 2020 that we'll have $11.8 million.
Right, because we refinanced $7.3 million in debt this year, so we had a $7.3 million expenditure this year that we didn't budget for because we didn't know it was going to happen a year ago at this time.
What was it?
We refinanced some debt, so we had $7.3 million of debt.
Yeah.
That we paid off and issued new debt at a lower interest rate.
I'm going to just try it one more time. So, why is that number so much different? Refinancing, I mean, it couldn't have gone from 32% interest to 2 or something?
No, it's the principal. We paid off $7.3 million of principal.
Ah, yes.
That we didn't plan to pay off.
Oh.
We didn't budget to pay that off last year because at, this time last year, we didn't know that we were going to have the opportunity to refinance. We don't ever know what interest rates are really going to do, so we may have another opportunity this, this coming year that we're not budgeting for right now.
The confusion I'm having is, you, you say we paid off and we refinanced.
Right, we're just looking at the expenditures here. This is only one side of the equation.
The, the $11 million would include the interest paid on the debt, plus the principal that was paid off.
Right.
When you, when we refinanced the debt.
Right. Plus all of our other existing debt.
Because the principal payment was an expenditure.
Right.
So, we have less debt total.
We have the same amount of debt, we are paying less interest.
Yep.
Am I right?
So, go, go up, yeah.
It's like refinancing your whole mortgage.
Go look up at line 17, Long-Term Debt Proceeds. That's the 7.3 million right there. That's where it's coming in.
Ah, sweetness. Thank you very kindly.
Okay, sorry.
For all your patience.
So, our total expenditures estimated for fiscal '21 will be just under $81 million is what the proposed budget is. I guess the next slide kind of simplifies, you know, those four functional lines there that, that you are really approving to publish, and this gives you kind of the instruction, by functional area gives you 2019 actual, reestimated, and what we're certifying for fiscal '21. So, in our instructional, instructional function area, we are recommending an increase of about 1.3 million. Total support services, about 546,000, non-instructional programs, just a minor increase there, and total other expenditures, you'll notice, is a negative number because we have not budgeted to refinance any debt.
So, what's the difference between a support service and a non-instructional program?
Non-instructional programs is basically going to be your food service. That's not entirely all, but 99% of it is food service.
Is there, do you, do you have any sense of the impact of this coronavirus on revenues or expenditures?
Well?
I'm just asking for a ballpark, too.
Yeah, so, the, one of the other pages that I shared with you, and I don't think this is in the presentation, so, we do five-year budget projections. We have a software that we use to do those, and based on some assumptions that have been agreed upon is, is what we base those five-year projections on. One of those assumptions that we've used for the last couple of years is that we will have 2% allowable growth in those out years. As of today, I might change that.
Key measures. Go back to.
Oh.
Oh, it's on.
No, this, this one isn't on.
Yeah, we put it on there.
Oh, you did?
It's not in the presentation.
It's a separate, okay. Yep, you're right, sorry.
Key measures. Go back to the agenda item. Key measures.
So, the board has some key measures, financials, financial measure, fiscal management measures. One of them is our spending authority, the other one that we talked about was solvency ratio. So, what this chart shows you here is, along the top, these are the supplemental state aid percentages and our certified enrollments that are happening over the last few years and are projected. You can see in that top box there that in those out years, fiscal '22 through '25, we are using an assumption of 2% supplemental state aid increase in each of those years. You can see back in 2018 and 2019, 2018 and 2019, we only had supplemental state aid increases of 1%. There are some that are already talking about the R-word, and so, as of today, I'm not, I'm not entirely certain that 2% is, is a good assumption going forward. But the thing with the But the thing with the five-year projections is that we know what it is for next year. This gives us a plan, kind of a path to go down, but this will 100% be wrong. These are estimates. We have time to adjust over the next, you know, each year you have another year to adjust to those future projections. So we're more concerned about what's going to happen in fiscal '21 than we are what's going to happen in fiscal '25. But with these assumptions that we're using, what our plan is, is to incrementally increase our solvency ratio over time so that we hit that 8% solvency, you know, in about 2024. And we're simultaneously bringing down that spending authority balance a little bit, and then we'll get those to a rate, a level that we want to maintain, and then you manage going forward. You can also see in the bottom box there, the tax rate per 1,000. You know, in, over the past few years, the tax rate has kind of gone up and then gone down, then gone up again. Our goal is to have a consistent, stable tax rate when possible and not have that variability So what we are recommending is that, oh, he's not here. I guess there's one other sheet that I gave you. So this sheet, I think, is very confusing. This is what we have to publish. This is what you'll see in the newspaper. But because this combines all funds together, I think this is kind of confusing. So I like to look at it in a different way. This is back in the presentation, sorry. This one. I like to look at it in a different way where you can see actually by fund. And so we're estimating, for example, the general fund. We're estimating that we're going to have a general fund balance of about $5.3 million at the end of this year. We would have revenues of about $68 million, expenditures of about $67 million, and so an estimated ending fund balance of about $6.3 million. That would be increasing that solvency ratio incrementally over time. Management fund, again, we'll have revenues of about 1.2, we'll have expenditures of about 1.3. PEPOL, you can see going down there, going down the list. This is just a different view by fund rather than everything all rolled up into one. This is a lot of information, yes.
So your biggest source of money is from state supplemental aid, right?
Yes.
And that's the $7,069 per student.
Yes.
That represents a 2.3% increase over last year, or $158 per student, right?
Yep.
That's over half of your, that's like 55% of all the money that you got in your budget, comes from that, right?
Not necessarily. So that's one piece. Like, we get additional special ed waiting and such, too, because our special ed count is going, has gone up. Our revenue for next year is going to be nine, our special ed revenue, which is included in the entire total budget, but you don't see it here, that goes up $966,000 for next year.
So we don't have to publish that in the paper?
That is, it is part of this. But there are pieces rolled up into here that's --
So you have, I mean, you show $44.3 million from state foundation aid.
Yes.
And total revenues of $80.43 million.
Yes.
That's 55% of your totals coming from state foundation aid.
Yeah.
Is that the right way to think about that?
Sure, yep.
And that represents 2.3% increase over last year.
Not exactly 2.3% because our enrollment went up.
Okay, gotcha. And most of your, so that's where most of your money comes from. Most of your money goes to teacher salaries, right? That's over 50% of all your expenditures go towards teacher salaries. And those are going up 2.3% to 3.4%, right?
Well, it depends on negotiations and such. And keep in mind, this 2.4% here, this isn't just salaries. This is everything.
This 2.4 --
The 2.4% increase in the instructional, instruction function line, that includes everything. That's not just salaries and benefits.
Okay.
So that's curriculum, that's instructional supplies.
Okay. I guess the point I was trying to drive to is you show a assumption in your modeling that shows a flat tax rate over the next, like, four or five years.
That's the goal.
Which is, that is a goal.
A goal.
Because I don't know that the board has ever been asked to approve that as a goal. So, but that's not my point of this. And you show solvency ratio improving over time, which is awesome. Is it, I don't know the intricacies of your model, I'm sure it's very complicated, but is it reasonable to assume a flat tax rate and improving solvency ratio when your expenses and teacher salaries are climbing at a faster rate than your state supplemental aid is averaging?
Well, another big piece of that is the increase in valuation from year to year. It's easier to maintain a stable tax rate if your valuations continue to increase over time, like ours have done. So another assumption that we are using in our modeling is that we're using the five-year rate of valuation increases, the five-year average for property valuation increase. So that's all factored in there, too.
So your answer is, yep, that's reasonable to assume. A flat tax rate and even though expenses are generally climbing faster than revenues because valuations are climbing faster than that.
Right, and our assumptions also include increases in enrollment from our enrollment projection study that we had done last year. So those assumptions also are in there. So there's all sorts of different assumptions, and which any one of them changing, which they will, is --
Which is why you've guaranteed that all of these numbers will eventually change.
Right, we're using the best data that we have available at this moment to do projections into, to fiscal planning projections into the future, but we know things are going to change. So that's why I said we're not as concerned with years four and five. We're more concerned with fiscal '21, which is all you are certifying tonight. Or all we're doing is setting the hearing and telling me to publish a budget for fiscal '21.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'm done, yeah.
May I have a motion to accept the certified budget and set a public hearing for Monday, April 6th, at 5:00 p.m. and direct the board secretary to publish the estimate in compliance with Iowa code?
So moved.
Second.
Pardon me, second?
Yes.
Begin is unteed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Okay, so along with this, we are also doing the same process for our budget amendment for the current fiscal year. We have two functional line items that we are proposing to amend. One is the total other expenditures because of the debt refinancing. We're going to increase, we're recommending to increase that budget from about $8.6 million to 16, just over 16 million. And then the total support services area, I think we're going to be okay, but I'm proposing that we increase that by a couple hundred thousand also, just to be safe. And that would be primarily due to offering some more benefits, health insurance benefits to support staff.
Questions for Paulette? May I have a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented and set a public hearing for Monday, April 6th, at 5:00 p.m. and direct the board secretary to publish the budget amendment in compliance with Iowa code?
So moved.
Second.
Unteed, Heitman. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 7-0.
Jan's not sitting there at the moment.
Alrighty then, thank you very much. Back to you.
Back to me. All right, so one of the things that we are working to clean up some of our chart of account codings, and we have three scholarships that were originally, at some point, placed in a fund that isn't really, isn't for scholarship funds. And so what we're proposing is that we shift those funds from that fund to a new fund, Fund 81, which is the scholarship fund, and close out that other fund that we really shouldn't be using. So that, and I need board approval to do that, so.
Questions for Paulette? I have a motion to approve the reclassification of scholarship funds that are currently in Fund 27 to Fund 81.
So moved.
Second.
Heitman, unteed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries 6-0. We're going to make short work out of these board policies.
Yes, we are. So for the first reading of board policies, four of the five were amended for your review at the last meeting. We have not made any changes to them since then. The two anti-bullying, 104 and 104 R1, the child abuse reporting, 402.2, and the communicable diseases, 403.3. So those were all amended prior to the review. I'm recommending the board approve those and waive the second reading.
May I have a motion for approval? Second.
Miller, unteed.
You said quick work.
Pardon me?
You said quick work.
I know. You have to remember, my brain just has to keep up with you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. 7-0.
604.3 was a new policy program for talent and gifted students. We'd recommend the board approve and waive the second reading.
So moved.
Move for approval?
Second.
Miller Hernandez. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries 7-0. Over, half-done, Mike.
401.1R, we're recommending deletion. We actually had two separate policies, one in the 100 series, which is an IASB recommended policy, and then we had one that was a little bit different, that contradicted a little bit of what was in the 100 series and the 400s. So we're recommending deleting 401.1R.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Heitman Hernandez. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries 7-0.
At Amy, review two policies which IASB requested that we make slight adjustments on. 402.6, staff technology use, social networking, and 402.6R. We're recommending those come back for a first reading. And then all of the rest of these policies, 403.6 and 403.6R1 on substance-free workplace and 403.6E1, and then 710.2, which we annually review on free and reduced-priced meals. And the two policies that be had, 906 and 906R1, which were recently adopted a couple years ago on drones. There are no proposed changes of any significance. We would suggest marking all of those as review.
Any objection? We're done, Mike.
Good job.
Looking at reminders, we have a special board meeting on March 24th, which will be right after the city council meeting on the 23rd. The Mark Perna presentation has been canceled.
Yeah, that has actually been postponed, and we're looking at rescheduling that for Thursday, August 20th in the evening.
No school showcase at our next meeting. There is no labor management committee on Tuesday, March 17th. MEA negotiations will be, presentation of initial proposals on Wednesday, March 18th. And are we having that school improvement advisory committee? Or is that going to be canceled?
What's the date?
April 14th.
Probably be postponed, but we'll let you know.
Obviously, the March 31st board curricular visit is canceled. The next regular meeting is April 6th, and Sarah has two policies dealing with the flag and the pledge of allegiance. Looking at committee reports, Darren is going to very quickly give you the information from the advisory committee.
Yes, and we had a number of people absent with everything going on from today's ACER committee. Joel Greer, our mayor, talked about his excitement over land or housing developments that look like they're moving forward across the city and some other areas as well. Kim Schwartz from Central Rivers AEA talked about, they've been out talking about their five-year strategic plan. Some of the components of that are future-ready workforce development, universal constructs, and SDI, which is special education programming. I talked, of course, about what we're dealing with recently, and Paulette gave a little bit of an overview of our budget presentation for today. Lynn Oberding was not able to attend but sent a message saying that they're getting very close to hiring a replacement for their economic development director, and that many of their upcoming events are being canceled or postponed due to the virus concerns currently. Shelley?
Lowell.
Lowell from the water department came, and it was kind of interesting. She talked about a lot of training that they're having to do with their staff related to money handling as it relates to the current concerns, money coming in, change being given back, and trying to get people adjusted to kind of self-serve to a certain extent versus rely on the hand-to-hand of her employees.
And the water is not at risk, so you don't have to bind bottled water.
There's none for sale, anyway.
I don't know why anybody purch, we'll just leave that. Nora, do you want to do anything on any of the negotiations?
No.
Okay.
Summary is there?
Okay. What have we done tonight to improve the education for students in the district?
Well, we heard about all the stuff at Lenahan. That was a lot of great stuff in there, the intermurals, the computer science stuff. That was good.
And the spelling thing was their presentation?
Yeah.
Just wanted to make that clear so you didn't think that 55 minutes of Lenahan was all their showcase.
I had not heard anything about the DARE program before this presentation, other than just having heard recently that we have had it forever, so.
Well, and even hearing about the evolution of the DARE program, I didn't realize how much it evolved into the social, emotional learning aspect.
Adjust the calendar for the safety of our kids and community?
And without a budget, we shall not move forward.
Right.
My quote for today comes from Molly Marty. I mean, doesn't she sound like a little foo-foo?
Kind of.
Well, Molly Marty has created a corporation called the National Resilience Foundation in Iowa City, as she is an adjunct professor at the University of Iowa. And I thought it was appropriate for tonight to talk about a quote that she made in her National Resiliency Institute. She said, "Helping others in need is not only a responsibility of life, it is what gives meaning to life." Do we have our student here? For readmission? Okay. You're done.
Now, they're watching themselves on the screen.
Ooh, aren't you a fancy boy?
Classic, classic cinema.
I could have quoted Citizen Kane, but yeah, baseball.
That's right. Baseball.
From Plumeier to Spaceballs. You want this on the record?
Okay, we're good then.
Mike took care of that.
What does it tell you?
Got viewers. Pardon?
I'm watching.
Oh, you're watching. Can you see B? Oh, yeah, we can see you.
Oh, no, this is my bad side. I forgot. I have to sit over there.
You're not even in the picture.
I know, it's a joke anywhere.
Oh, okay.
We're not supposed to make sense.
I saw that.
Parents try to.
Yes.
Their kids with.
Oh, God. Alrighty, are we ready, folks? I'd like to call the special meeting of the Marshalltown Community School District aboard to order. You do have to tune that down, just.
I stopped.
Okay. The echo doesn't work for me. If you're coming in to join us, would you please social distance yourselves? Welcome to those of you who are here with us today, those of you who are watching on live broadcast, and to those who will be watching us on delayed broadcast. The individuals at the table with me are, from my right, Karina Hernandez, Bob Unti, Sean Heitman; from my left, Mike Miller and Sarah Faltis; at the center table with me, to my right is Paulette Newbold, the board secretary; to my left is Theron Shute, the superintendent of schools, and I am B. Nivlock. Would you read with me the mission of the Marshalltown Community School District?
We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences.
And stand as you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
There are not.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Miller Hernandez, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries six zero.
So I want to thank all the board members for being here this evening for the special meeting that we called on relatively short notice, although it was within the 24-hour notice period to discuss one of the many ramifications of the school closure situation that we find ourselves in. And that particular situation is we have a number of displaced employees that are displaced without work currently and pay as a result of the close, closure. We have employees who are employed by us for the primary purpose of providing service to students when they're in session. These particular employee groups are paraprofessionals, are bus drivers and monitors, and are 10-month secretaries primarily. When we have a school closure due to weather-related matters, more times than not, those particular days are made up. So in that case, on the day that the closure takes place, the, they're not working, so they don't get paid for that day, but then the day gets made up and they get paid, kind of like a deferred payment type situation. When we first made the decision ahead of the governor's recommendation to close schools to extend our spring break a week, you know, that created a situation where there were five days, five additional days of these employees being without pay at that particular point in time. But as you remember, we also talked about, with the governor's recommendation for closure, in closing another three weeks, we talked about rescheduling or adding those three weeks on the back end of the school year. So in that, this case, it was a four-week closure, but three weeks of which were at the recommendation of the governor. So essentially, since we were forgiving the students those five days because we had the latitude within what was then the law as it related to minimum instructional hours of 1,080, those employees would have been without a week's worth of pay at that time. So the dilemma that we're in right now is that there's a couple different options. As I see it, we could choose to go. One option, which I think is one of the direct reasons that the federal government has taken, or the state government's taken, emergency measures for expedient access to unemployment earnings. One of the ways would be to furlough these employees, essentially temporary furlough due to the circumstances of the closure, and encourage people and give people the guidance or the information for which they can pursue unemployment. It's not a given that every single employee that would apply would necessarily qualify for that. If they were to qualify for that, I believe the best-case scenario is usually about two-thirds of their regular wages, their gross wages could be received with unemployment, but it depends on the individual and their individual circumstances to know for sure what that would be. One of the things that we're unsure of, you know, our, our employees that are in this circumstance of just working during the school year when kids are in session are not eligible for unemployment in the summer months. And so we don't know whether, under these emergency circumstances, assuming that the closure was prolonged from four weeks to six to eight to 12 to the whole school year, we don't know if, when the school year ends, whenever that may be, if the unemployment would end or if it would actually carry for those people through the summer. I'm not sure we've received the answer to that. So, so that's one option. And that would be the, that would be a common option, for example, if a paraprofessional was a one-on-one associate, if the student left or graduated and there was no need for such a position, a person could be unemployed as a result of something like that and qualify to go on unemployment. The other option, and an option which many of our surrounding school districts, and quite honestly, probably a preponderance of the school districts across the state that have made a decision on this issue have taken, is for the four-week closure that we have currently, to go ahead and pay those employees their regular wages for that period of time. That, we, and a lot of people that are advocates for that approach are advocating on the pretense that we've already budgeted it for it, so why wouldn't we do that? And that's true, we have budgeted because the assumption was that we were going to be working on those particular days. But what we haven't budgeted for is any additional days that are placed on the end of the year relative to their salary and wages if we were to extend the year. So, for example, right now, as it stands, based on what we knew at the time, we've said, we're going to make up those three weeks at the end of the year and finish with students on June 25th and with staff on June 26th. Well, if we pay those wages now, we don't have those wages to pay from what was regularly scheduled to be the end of the year, June 5th and 6th, through June 25th and 26th. Paulette, I'm sure, has some numbers on what that would cost the district. I think roughly, just for the paraprofessionals, the average daily cost is about $15,000 a day, I believe. So in essence, I think that when districts are choosing and boards to make the decision to pay their employees the wages that they would be earning now for this four-week closure timeframe, they're also leveraging a financial decision, which is making somewhat of a commitment that either we're willing to pay whatever it takes for whatever, more for whatever days we add on, or I think most likely, the decision that they're making is to stick with their original ending-of-school date and not spend anything more than what they had budgeted for originally.
Can I ask a question, Theron?
Yep.
So we made the decision of a June 25th end date before the governor said, "You don't have to make up those days." And so we made the decision based on, we've got to make up those days.
For our students.
It looks like now, we could revisit that decision if we wanted to revisit that decision.
Correct.
Have you thought about the pros and cons of revisiting the June 25th decision? And if so, what are they?
The, so let's say, well, the benefit of sticking with the June 25th and 26th decision is that, at the ti, at the time being, assuming that we're back in session, that we would have three weeks of teaching and learning, the students would receive three weeks of education that they otherwise wouldn't if we stuck with the original date. Because as it stands right now, they're going to miss four weeks, you know, of education. As part of that decision and adjusting the date, we forgave one of those four weeks because we did have enough instructional hours built into the schedule beyond the 1,080 that we could, we could excuse the students those five days, but we would have to figure out a way to have the staff make up those five days because they're on contracted days and not ours. So the plan was, and is, as it currently stands, was our, our staff has been working diligently the last three days at the building level and at the district level to help provide our families and our students with guidance as to how they can sustain the learning that they've done throughout the year, as well as ideas for other enrichment in learning and using some of their time while the school is closed in a meaningful way. We can't require that work, we can't hold them accountable for that work because we can't 100% guarantee equity with all students based on what those things are that we've provided and the degree of internet accessibility that they have. We've obviously made provisions to try to provide devices and not have that be a barrier. But the other reality is many of our kids, and especially older kids, may be charged with caretaking their siblings while their parents work, which limits the amount of time that they would be, quality time that they'd be able to devote to it. So the downside is, the most obvious, is that students are going to be short-changed the amount of learning and quality teaching that they would otherwise receive in a normal year. But the, but to look at the other end of it, you know, this is a very unusual, challenging, difficult time for many of our employees to be able to, even though the, the state government has taken emergency measures to try to expedite the opportunity to receive unemployment and hopefully make fewer hoops to jump through in order to potentially qualify that for that, there's not a guarantee that they all would. And so there's going to be financial hardship with, with the employees. The challenge of, another challenge that we're faced with if the decision is to go ahead and pay everyone what they otherwise would be receiving during this time of closure is that, you know, I think we have a responsibility to find a safe and meaningful way to engage as many of our employees, both certified and classified, in work during that period of time. I don't believe that we've ever believed or had the intention, for example, with our certified staff, that it's time well-spent to require them to come in for anything beyond a few days to a week in the summer without kids. Their, their primary benefit is teaching and teaching our young people. So, so we do believe that there are a number of meaningful ways that we can engage them to work remotely and safely, and in some cases with, you know, obviously, we have some essential employees that will be continuing to work on grounds in a safe way as long as we don't rise to another, another level of crisis to where a... as we don't rise to another level of crisis to where a quarantine is enforced, you know, on everybody. But the deep cleaning, for example, is going to continue to happen within our buildings. We're going to continue to provide community feeding for all the children that need the meals in the district. We are fortunate that we have, our board in our district is committed to providing a high degree of technology access and knowledge and expertise, and we're fairly, we're very well-equipped at the district. And I think most of our employees are pretty well-equipped at home to be able to do a lot of the type of work that needs to be done collaboratively, digitally, and remotely from home or from another, you know, safe location. So, I can't, what I can't assure, nor could we expect, is that every single minute of every single hour of every single day will necessarily be meaningfully engaged work as we would hope would be the case when people are onsite working. But we have an amazing team, I believe, of district-level teacher leaders, as well as instructional coaches at the building level, and they've been helping provide what support and guidance they can really since before this week to try to help guide teachers in developing the types of things to make available to our kids and our families. Our attention now, that we've gotten that initial wave out of that kind of information, is really now, in the next few days, in the event that we do decide to stick with our original ending date and we do decide to pay our displaced employees during this period of time, will be to very quickly put together some meaningful ways for them to develop themselves as far as professional development is concerned, whether it's on an individual basis or within a group basis, or whether it's a building or district-wide basis. And that goes for all employee groups. For example, you may remember that Dr. Ryan had presented to you some time ago a digital platform that would allow us to provide high-quality professional development for all of our employees, and I would say in particular, our classified staff, probably even more so than our certified staff. Our teachers and teacher leaders have developed high-quality summer learning platforms that have been available voluntarily for people to do professional development individually and groups, and we could make that available going forward for people that haven't done those particular experiences. And we would definitely continue to be engaged in a lot of other ways. One of the things that we talked about today very informally is that there's always been, with our digital transformation over the years, there's always been kind of an idea, "Wouldn't it be neat if every one of our certified staff had Level 1 Google certification?" Or, "What if we got to the point where they had even a more advanced certification with Google, too?" Those two things, which are very high-quality online learning that, and in certification, people having a certification, just like we're talking about, how neat would it be for our kids to graduate with certifications, skills being identified, are two things that we can make available at a pretty cheap cost as far as the licensure goes for our people. So, there are things that we could move on pretty quickly in the short term while also having time to develop further things for the long term. And I think we really do have to plan for the worst and hope for the best as it relates to this virus and its potential impact on our community and state, just as we've seen around the world and country. I guess what I'm trying to say is that I believe four weeks is a bare minimum, that we're going to likely be out of school. I think it could very easily stretch into six or eight, or maybe the entire year as we're seeing occur, you know, even with our colleges that are choosing to do things differently.
Your high school staff, I think, has done a great job reaching out to parents and students, holding virtual office hours, giving resources for kids to be able to stay engaged. That's a big attaboy. You've done a great job handing out Chromebooks. A lot of people want Chromebooks. I've had people, you know, today's the day when, you know, we spent all the money on one-to-one Chromebooks, where you get the use out of that. I've had people from other districts call and saying, "What a great thing that you do for your students in Marshalltown." So, that's a hu, two huge attaboys to our teachers and our school district that we need to recognize. Here's what I think we ought to do. I think we ought to pay pares, bus drivers, monitors, 10-month secretaries, as we were going to pay them, keep on paying them. And if we have to revisit the June 25th day and back it up, back to June 5th or June 10th, that's what I think we ought to do. I don't think we ought to put our people through the whole unemployment routine. We ought to, we ought to pay them. They count on it, and we count on them, and that's what we ought to do. That's my opinion.
I think, you know, the thing that we have to be guarded about is, you know, I think we can pretty safely say, and I'm talking primarily about our certified staff, our teachers, our nurses, our counselors, our social workers, et cetera. I think I can pretty safely say we could, with relative ease, in the four weeks that we're off, or the three and a half remaining weeks currently, we could engage them for sure for a couple of those weeks in meaningful work. What we have to be cautious of is that if we engage, if we engage them and require them to do work that would take up that whole time, potentially, then we don't have the latitude to add days at the end of the year. And I will say that from the beginning of our school calendar, we were probably one of the later-ending times of the year for teachers. I think that's a product of sustaining spring break and, you know, having the length of winter break that we do. And so, you know, anything beyond when we're originally scheduled, especially if it's beyond a week, is going to make us an anomaly. But the other thing that I will say is that there, you know, our students and our families need this education as much as anybody. And we've made great strides over the course of the last few years, and particularly this last year. I've never seen our teachers and teacher leaders more excited because of the work that they've been doing to see what the results of the state test would be this year, you know, which would have been the second administration of this new test. I don't think any determinations have been made as to what might occur with the test with this four-week hiatus or closure, but I do know that a lot of other things that are tied to the test, like the S.A. designations and some of the other things have been, the state's been provided an opportunity to waive that and to basically carry those forward into the next year already. So, it wouldn't surprise me if something changed also in light of this relative to the testing this spring, whether it be moving it to next fall or moving it a whole year down the road. So, our recommendation from the administration is pretty much exactly what you said, Mike, which is to pay our employees what they otherwise would have been paid in the extended spring break and also the three additional weeks of closure, and then see where we're at, basically, at the end of that four weeks, to see if we have a prolonged break before making final determinations on when the end of the school year will be. But again, the degree to which we choose to have our employees work over the course of this closure is going to force our hand as to when that end date can and should be based on finances.
Other questions or comments?
The Iowa Association of School Boards came out with a resolution that speaks to this matter today, and we took that resolution and made some adjustments in the wording to reflect what our recommendation is. I'd like to have Paulette read that for everybody. It's somewhat lengthy.
Yeah, it's a little lengthy. So, the Resolution for Pandemic Response and Emergency Suspension of Policy. Whereas Iowa Code Chapter 279.8 authorizes local school boards to govern their respective districts, including adopting policies for their own governance, and whereas the board may by formal action suspend or rescind board policy as deemed necessary, appropriate, or in the best interests of the district, and whereas on March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization characterized COVID-19 as a pandemic, and whereas on March 13th, 2020, the President of the United States declared a national state of emergency, and on March 15th, 2020, Iowa Governor Kim Reynolds recommended closure of all public and private K-12 schools in Iowa until April 13th, 2020, to contain the spread of COVID-19. And whereas on March 17th, 2020, Iowa Governor Kim Reynolds declared a state of public health disaster emergency under the authority granted through Iowa Constitution and directed implementation of the Iowa Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management's Iowa Emergency Response Plan in response to the novel coronavirus, and whereas displaced employees may be called upon to work on district property and/or from a remote location to help provide continuity in educational services and building operations, as well as participate in professional development. And whereas on March 17th, 2020, the Iowa Legislature passed and the governor signed Senate File 2408 granting waiver of the instructional time requirements in Iowa Code Chapter 279.10 for all public school districts closing before April 12, 2020, in order to prevent or contain the spread of COVID-19, and granting Governor Reynolds the ability to waive instructional time requirements for any public school district which closes on or after April 12, 2020, to prevent or contain the spread of COVID-19. And whereas the Iowa Department of Education, which has the authority to establish and interpret graduation requirements and to oversee other crucial aspects of public education, is providing written guidance to Iowa school districts on issues related to COVID-19, including but not limited to student attendance, distance online learning, high school credit, meal distribution, and other issues. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Marshalltown School Board hereby suspends provisions of its board policies and/or whole policies as identified by the district superintendent or designee if such suspension is necessary to implement written guidance from state or federal agencies relating to containing COVID-19 for the duration identified in the governor's State of Public Health Emergency Declaration of March 17th, 2020, or as otherwise determined by the board. Be it further resolved that the district superintendent will consult with and report to the board as feasible and appropriate regarding the emergency closure and efforts to implement written guidance from health and government agencies. Be it further resolved that the district superintendent is authorized to close any school facility without further action by the Board of Directors. Such closure shall continue during the emergency created by the COVID-19 pandemic until such time as the superintendent, in consultation with appropriate health and government authorities, deems it in the best interests of the district and its students to open schools. Be it further resolved that the district superintendent is authorized, based upon the needs of the district and guidance from health and government agencies, to direct staff assignments during district closures, including but not limited to essential employees who must report to work, employees who may be reassigned, and employees whose services are not needed. Be it further resolved that access to public school grounds and public school buildings of the district may be limited as directed by the superintendent during district closures. Be it further resolved that certified exempt employees will remain employed during the school closure and until the number of days expressed on the contract have been fulfilled, unless otherwise approved by the board. Days that contracted employees do not report for duty onsite or from a remote location due to closure do not constitute a fulfilled contract day, except to the extent those days are forgiven by the board, by the district. Be it further resolved that in light of this district-wide emergency closure, the board authorizes the superintendent to place hourly, non-exempt employees on paid administrative leave and to continue to pay them for up to four weeks during the period of school closure contingent on being on-call and available for work assignments, and the board shall reevaluate this authority for any school closure lasting longer than four weeks. Be it further resolved that in the interest of public health and/or to comply with federal or state health department recommendations or guidance, the board may limit the number of people who can physically attend board meetings and may instead encourage the public to attend or listen to its open public meetings via video conference, live streaming on television and/or the Internet, and the board may also limit public comment to written comments. Be it further resolved that the board reserves the right to adjust board meeting dates, times, and locations during the district-wide emergency closure in a manner consistent with the open meetings law, and notes that any or all board members may attend board meetings electronically as permitted by law. Be it further resolved that execution of this resolution is conclusive evidence of the board's approval of this action and of the authority granted herein. The board warrants that it has, and at the time of this action, had full power and lawful authority to adopt this instrument. This resolution will remain in full force and effect until it is rescinded or amended by subsequent action of the board.
Pretty all-inclusive. Any questions or comments?
I do.
About the resolution?
Not the resolution. I just thought of another one for the earlier conversation about the calendar and the adjustment of the end of the day, the end of the last day of school. Due to summer planning, how quick can we find out if we're going to adjust the calendar for the 25th, or are we going to push it back?
Well, unless there was reason to hold another special meeting, the next opportunity to discuss that would be our April 6 meeting.
Okay.
I have three questions related to the resolution. There was one change that is made in this text from the document you sent us that's...
Right. That was the orig, we received this resolution from our attorneys and such at 2:00 this afternoon. So, what you see is the sample.
Yes.
And what is on here is, includes the changes that we've discussed.
Can I just look at that? It's, it's, it's not a very, it's like one three-line thing. It's toward the beginning of it. This is, this is what is in there, and you changed it to something else.
Yeah, we eliminated, some of those paragraphs are and ors, depending on what...
No, but that's, this is a very different thing. I just wondered if I can see that again.
We don't have that one. We changed that one.
I know, that's what I'm saying, is can I see what you changed it to? It's right after the Iowa, Kim Reynolds is clear, it's after that. Yeah, so it's the, where is it? Is it right just above? No, it's above that, I think.
I think this is the paragraph that you're talking about.
That's the one, displaced employees...
Displaced employees may be called upon to work on district property and/or from a remote location to help provide continuity in educational services and building operations, as well as participate in professional development.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to show that I was paying attention there. The other thing is, are we legally referred to as a Board of Directors?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Because I, there, I just got education today. And the last is, are we allowed to attend board meetings electronically by law? Cool, thanks very much.
Other questions or comments?
Oh, what paragraph was that in?
Oh, the third from the last, via telephone or video conferences.
Or listen to its open public meetings via.
Nice.
You want a motion to accept the resolution? I am looking for a motion to accept the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Second. Janice Untiti, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries 7-0. Anything else? May I have a motion for adjournment?
Moved.
Second.
Untiti Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. We are adjourned. Thank you all.